Welcome and good evening. I will now call the September first work session of the Lane Community College Board of Education to order. Even though Governor Kate Brown's stay-home save lives, executive order is no longer in effect. In order to continue conducting meetings in a manner that will help to combat the spread of COVID-19 and promote the safety and well-being of our community, this meeting is being held remotely. I know we all thought we would be doing something differently tonight, but it is still really great to see everyone who's here and also, you know, like I said, welcome to our viewing audience. I'd like to remind board members and staff to keep themselves muted and to use the hand raise feature when you would like to speak. That really helps me keep track of folks and board members are also asked to have their video turned on. So you are visible to the viewing public. Tammy, would you go ahead and take the role, please?
Sure. Holly Johnson?
Here.
Angela Van Kraus?
Present.
Mike Guy?
Here.
Austin Foal Maggie?
Here.
Steve Mattel?
Here.
Rosie Pryor?
Here.
And Lisa Fragula?
Present, thank you. And we'll start our meeting with an acknowledgement of homeland. Brett Roulette is going to read that for us this evening. He's the Executive Director of External Affairs at the college.
Good evening. We begin our meeting with the acknowledgement that the land we are on is the traditional homelands of the Kalapulia people. The Kalapulia were stewards of this very land for over 14,000 years before their traditional way of life was forever disrupted and destroyed. We start our meeting with humility and reverence for the original inhabitants, the Kalapulia.
Thank you Brett. So the first thing on our agenda this evening is a board anti-bias training. And we have our ACCT consultant Jill Wakefield here with us. Jill, would you like to introduce yourself to everybody?
Yes, thank you Chair. My name is Jill Wakefield and I'm honored to serve as the search consultant for your presidential search process. I've worked for 40 years in the community college system, primarily in Seattle. I've worked as a classified staff, a faculty member and administrator. Also served as President of South Seattle Community College, Chancellor of the Seattle Colleges, and then interim President of Bellevue College. Since retiring, I have been working with ACCTs as a search consultant for the past four years. It's something I love to do because I'm so excited about the community colleges and the importance of the leadership. And you have had great leadership at Lane Community College and we want to make sure that you continue with a process that finds the right person to lead your college in the future and to build on the work of Dr. Hamilton. So thanks for having me.
Great, thank you Jill. Deborah, was there anything you wanted to let us know before we begin the board anti-bias training?
No, actually, I think I was just going to introduce Jill and I think she did a much better job herself.
Great, thank you.
Well, and Deborah is going to put the PowerPoint up. But I wanted to say that as part of the process, and I think we'll be talking a little bit about the process later on, there is, you appoint a search advisory committee to assist the board. And this is a committee of somewhere between 12 to 15. And depending on what the board decides, their role is to help develop the presidential profile, to help review the confidential applications, help discuss what you might call semifinalists. They may or may not, depending on what you decide, interview the semifinalists and recommend finalists to the board. Part of the process on the first meeting is to do a lot of background information to help them understand their timeline. But also we do this anti-bias training to help them as they begin reviewing, could be 40 or 50 applications, and to make sure that they're aware of their own biases and we all have them. And so this is sort of the training that we will be doing with the search advisory committee. So this will just give you kind of a heads up, so you know what we'll be talking about and setting the stage for a successful search. So I don't know if there's any questions about that. At any time, just raise your hand, but let's go ahead and begin, if that's all right with you.
That sounds great. And I did want to remind people that this is being recorded and it will be available on YouTube. So if later on you want to watch it again, you can.
Right. Okay. Thank you. So I'm going to ask, and I've not done this on Zoom before, but I'm going to ask that you close your eyes. We're going to participate in a little visualization exercise. So let's just imagine you're participating in next year's ACCT's annual congress. I'm not sure where it will be next year, but a year from now. And you're actually going to be presenting on how to hire a new president with a successful session because yours has gone so well. You have time for one last, one more session before you have to leave to catch a plane in order to get back to your next board meeting in Eugene. So you select to go to a session and where the speaker is a leader in the technology industry who's talking about how community colleges can better prepare students for the upcoming workforce. It's a great presentation and you have to run though to catch your Uber and make it to the airport just in time. In fact, you are so close to the deadline that you are the last person on the plane before it takes off. Well, as you step on the plane, the captain is there and greets you. You take your seat, you prepare for the meeting. Then when you land, you grab a shuttle to Eugene, because in this case you're going back to Portland. Where you're on your shuttle, you're seated with one of Eugene's most successful business leaders. You arrive on campus just in time to make the meeting where you're meeting with the president and this is the president's second or third meeting. So keep your eyes closed. Tell me, what did that tech leader look like? Man or a woman? How about your pilot? Was a pilot African-American, Caucasian, young, older? Okay, how about the business leader in your shuttle? Was that a man or a woman? A person of color? And then how about your new president? So with that, open your eyes. Just an example of how when we go through the process of when we visualize sort of how powerful the subconscious is. And so we're not going to ask you to share any of your answers, just that when we think of certain things, what we think, what comes to our minds. So the brain is very clever, but it has several foibles that lead us to cognitive bias. Perceptions of the situation rather than facts often shape our decisions and they can lead to bias for against a person or a group. And often our implicit bias can run contrary to our conscious values. Let's go to the next session, the next slide. So go ahead and click through it so you've got the whole thing. Yeah, so my first job as a college president was in about 2003. I was darned excited because I had just been appointed. It was the first woman. I had much, I wanted to meet everybody. I wanted to accomplish everything in the first few months. And one of the things I was doing was inviting community leaders to have lunch. We, at my college, we had a wonderful culinary program and it had this dining room, a formal dining room, that was a perfect place to meet new, bring new folks because it was a training lab. You got to meet students, you could talk to the students, you could see students in action. So it really gave us a great way to introduce what we were doing. So on this day, Mrs. Helen Sutton, known as Mrs. West Seattle because she'd been on the board. She ran the chamber, she ran everything that had to do with West Seattle where our college is located. She was the go-to person. In fact, she'd been my mentor and I think that she was in a large part responsible for me getting the presidency. She invited a local architect to campus to have lunch. So they arrived on campus and she arrived with this very good-looking architect in a wonderful navy blue suit and a red tie and came over and sat down. And I was dressed in what I thought was my presidential, whatever that looks like, dress, I guess. And I was nervous and so that, as was the waiter. It was early in the quarter, the waiter came over and said to, and you could tell he was shaking, he was so nervous. But he had his notes and he welcomed us and he told us what was on the menu. He told us a little bit about himself and he was doing an excellent job. And Mrs. Sutton, my mentor, said, "Young man, I'd like you to meet the new president of South Seattle Community College." And the young man reached right in front of me and shook hands with the architect. Well, at that point, my job was to keep the young man from leaving and dropping out because I thought, I thought he was going to fall apart at that minute. So at that point, we talked about the importance of learning, perhaps implicit bias, and doing everything we could to keep the young man still as our server. But it was a good lesson for me and it was a good lesson, I think, to the student and to everyone that was there that this just happened. And I still remember that and I kind of laughed, but I also think that how important it was to have a conversation. So in bias, we all know that everyone has biases. And so as we look at, when I'm working with the committee, we recognize that for human, we've got our biases. And most are, many are conscious, explicit, and the others are unconscious. Now, the conscious ones are pretty well-known. For instance, I'm a dog person and I know, I like to hang around with dog people because I think they're kind of better people than cat people. Well, other people in my family might disagree, especially those with cats. I also know that I like baseball more than football. And I have, I don't think it's conscious bias, but I actually think that the UW has a better football team than the University of Oregon. However, I think the facts may show that I am totally wrong. So it's the unconscious biases that usually get us into trouble and that influences decisions we make every day. It's our very clever brain, the one that we, that we look at perceptions of situations rather than the facts that shape our decisions and that lead to the bias. So unconscious biases come up without realizing, most people have no idea. And these are your committee members, others, we have, we know what our conscious values are. We have strong conscious values. We are committed to diversity, we're committed to equity, we're committed to giving everyone an opportunity to apply for our jobs and to get those jobs. However, sometimes without even recognizing it, our implicit biases are in action and we need to calm them. So first of all, the key, we talk to our committee members is just to recognize and accept that we have them. And they're not making us good or bad people, but if we can actually catch them and catch ourselves, then we can have a better process and the outcome will be also more successful. So next slide, please. Unconscious bias, as we talked a little bit, is just when we make judgments about other people based on different characteristics without knowing that we're making those judgments. And you know, if most of our brain is working unconsciously, it's happening a lot. I've been thinking a lot about my unconscious biases the last few days. This is quite a popular topic with Oprah, Malcolm Gladwell. A lot of folks are really talking about this and how it really affects our decisions on a lot that we do. So mostly we talk about ethnicity, race, gender and age. Those are the most common. However, there's so many others that, that may play, will play a role. And especially in these searches, there's certain things to look at that will, that people will have a bias. And you know, it's not, it might be religion or sexual orientation, weight. When candidates see a candidate who might be heavier, they make, there's comments, not comments, but they're making thoughts about, is this someone who looks like a president? Visible tattoos? You know, does a president, as someone said, was our president, was a president shouldn't have tattoos? Well, I'm not sure what the facts would show, if there's any evidence about that or not. We had one college I was at, the, one of the candidates was nine months pregnant when she interviewed. Some of the questions were not allowed or inappropriate and we had some tough conversations about what's appropriate. I had a boss who was from Taiwan. His English wasn't perfect and there were a lot of questions. Should he be the president if his English isn't perfect? Well, they forgot to mention that he spoke four other languages perfectly and that in fact, that the assets that he brought were his, the many languages that he spoke. Colleges attended. Those who attended, it's possible to look at an application, then you see someone attended Harvard or an Ivy League. And the assumption is, oh, that person must be a great candidate. Or on the other hand, college attended where a person that, say it's a doctorate program that you may not have respect for, you may not think that it's that great of a college. Again, oh, that person attended that college. Therefore, perhaps I shouldn't send them forward without looking at the facts. It's your own opinion or your unconscious bias. And a lot of times what we're trying to do is just get people to be aware. Next slide. Wanted, this is, we'll show this YouTube. And I think, can you do that? Can you do the YouTube? It just provides a little brief overview for the committee and for you.
Are you able to see it?
I don't see it.
We're not seeing it Deborah.
Right on top.
You, you might need to stop sharing and then yeah, reshare and start it.
Oh, okay.
Start it and reshare that, that window.
Okay.
There's sometimes a small option you need to check that says share video and audio. It's separate from screen share.
Okay.
We can see it, great.
Implicit bias exists when we unconsciously hold attitudes towards others or associate stereotypes with them. For example, we often harbor negative stereotypes about others without consciously realizing that we do so. Implicit bias, which is also called unconscious bias or implicit social cognition, is a prejudice that is deep-seated within the brain, below the conscious level. Studies have demonstrated implicit bias against racial groups, genders, LGBTQ and other marginalized groups. We may even be prejudiced against our own group, although we tend to favor our in-group with positive stereotypes and disfavor out-groups with negative stereotypes.
The immediate feeling you get or the immediate thoughts you have about a person, an assumption, you feel, just anything you feel really stems somewhere from an experience you've had or your upbringing.
Depends on the region you're from, the country you're from, the background you grew up in. That shapes the person's unconscious bias.
I think sometimes you don't even realize it, but your own actions, maybe the way you treat others as opposed to treating others that look like you or that act like you or that are your friends.
Implicit bias often runs counter to people's conscious, expressed beliefs. Few physicians espouse racially discriminatory views and yet doctors tend to recommend less pain medication for black patients than for white patients with the identical injury. In other words, people can be explicitly unbiased, yet implicitly biased, according to psychologist Daniel Kelly and colleagues.
One of my closest friends since high school, we've worked on a lot of projects together. We've been in a lot of classes together. Sometimes we'd be working together in a group project, for example, and she would say stuff like, oh, you're good at math, you're good at science, here, you can take this part of the project or something. I don't hold it against her or anything, she doesn't mean any harm by it, but obviously there's that implicit sort of bias or stereotype that Asians are better at math and science.
Implicit bias has been found in a large array of studies using various tests. But much of the evidence for the phenomenon comes from Harvard University's Project Implicit website, home of the Implicit Association Test, or the IAT. Literally millions of people have visited this site and taken various tests that ask them to respond rapidly to questions that require them to associate blacks or whites, males or females, or young or old, et cetera, with positive or negative words.
Most of the implicit biases that I've run into are probably positive ones. Things that come with being a white male and having height and having a good voice and things like that.
Professor Nosek and colleagues tested more than 700,000 subjects and found that more than 70% of white subjects more easily associated white faces with positive words and black faces with negative words, concluding that this was evidence of implicit racial bias. In fact, additional evidence indicates that measures of implicit bias better predict people's conduct than measures of explicit bias.
I think that if you are anyone, to be blunt, that it's not a white male, you potentially feel that implicit bias. Maybe you're just looking for someone that is like you because you like you and so you want to be around more people like you. But what's really rooted under that is that you potentially don't think that someone else is as smart or as capable and that is coming from a place of implicit bias.
Now here's some good news. Various scientists have criticized the IAT. They point out, for example, that individuals who take the test on different dates often score substantially differently. Even IAT supporters admit that implicit bias, at least as demonstrated by the test, is widespread but relatively minor and has only a small impact upon people's real-world actions. In other words, the results of the test are not strong enough to predict particular behaviors by individual people. However, let's not get too comfortable. Even if the IAT cannot predict the future conduct of any one individual on a given occasion, it still indicates how groups of people will act on average and that is worrisome. For example, few people openly advocate for discrimination in hiring, but white applicants receive 50% more responses from potential employers than do black applicants with the same resume. Likewise, college professors are substantially more likely to answer student emails if the student's names indicate that they are probably white than if the names sound like they belong to black students. And in one study, online course instructors were 94% more likely to respond to discussion posts by white male students than by other students.
There are a lot of opportunities to promote people within the workplace. It doesn't happen because of different biases. People assume, you know, a woman is of a certain age or they're married and you think, oh, she's going to want to have kids, so we're not going to give her this really tough big project.
When I graduated from West Point in 2009, I went to my first organization, the first unit assignment. I was the only Latino officer in a, in a group of about 100 other officers. Yeah, I think there was a lot of hesitation and really following my lead as a leader for the organization. I think it hindered in some way, like the ability for us to like build cohesive trust within our organization and really have that going into a combat environment.
Because implicit bias operates at a mostly unconscious level, it is difficult for individuals to overcome. No existing training regime has proven particularly effective at de-biasing implicit bias. But fortunately, some research shows that stereotypes can be unworn and that safeguards can be put in place to minimize their impact. For example, women used to make up only a relatively small percentage of the musicians in orchestras. But when orchestras began holding blind auditions, where the applicants played behind a curtain and their genders were unknown to the judges, the percentage of women chosen to play in symphony orchestras doubled. Perhaps we can put a dent in implicit bias after all.
These biases are sometimes so deep-rooted within us or within our culture that we don't even realize that they are biases.
We could have a mutually, you know, beneficial conversation and really benefit from learning from each other and really understand that we're all not that different.
Listen, really absorb the experiences of those around you, especially those who come from backgrounds that are unlike yours.
Learn something new about a person and then that will kind of help shift that bias because now you've actually asked that person or now you get to know that person.
There are so many opportunities to engage with others to say, I don't want to do this again. Can you help me not do that? And people are willing to have those conversations.
Morning.
I think we're going back to the PowerPoint.
Thank you Deborah.
Thank you. And then the next slide. So we, in our group, in our committee, will talk about different kinds of biases, the ones that really impact the hiring environment. And we do this to just get our committee members thinking, especially before they start reviewing those applications so that they can really catch their biases. The four that we'll talk about with them are confirmation, bandwagon, affinity and the anchor. So let's start with the confirmation. Now, the confirmation is basically, this is where, to favor one's own hypothesis. And then, once you've kind of made a decision, you point to information that supports that belief. So with, when are we going to our first review applications or we go into the interviews, we know that most of the candidates, our interviewers, our committee members will make up their mind pretty quickly, probably within a few minutes. And once they make that decision, the tendency is spend time confirming whether, rather than gathering information. You'll hear me a lot talk about the presidential profile. The importance of the presidential profile, not only is recruiting, but it's what's used to score the applications. So what we ask, what we'll talk to our committee members, talk about be aware of danger of confirmation bias. And the fact is, I love that person, I don't know why, I just know that they would be the best president for Lane Community College and acknowledge that, that there is confirmation bias and that when we see someone, instead of trying to get more information to see if the person is really as good as I think they are, that we take a time and we look at what else is there that might reinforce or maybe say, I'm not sure, I thought this was a great candidate, but maybe not. So again, we stick to the factual questions, we use the presidential profile. I love this candidate, but let's look at the presidential profile, the leadership, the experience they've had, have they, where they've worked, is this, does this candidate, as appealing as they are, do they meet the presidential profile? And then we also provide opportunities and that's why we use a committee, a committee of 12 to 15 usually. And we discuss candidates and we go around, around the group and we talk about, we, one thing we've always started, at one point, if you start with my concerns with a candidate, it seems to all go negative and it goes so negative that those candidates never actually make it to the interview pool. So instead we start going around with, what do you see about this candidate that's appealing? So that everyone has a chance to talk about how appealing, what this person brings to the job. And then we go around and talk about what concerns you might have. So again, you're gathering information and you're gathering the opinions of your fellow committee members. So next slide, the bandwagon. So I think we've, group think, I think we've all been in a situation like this. You're in a committee, you're in a committee and suddenly, as you go around, you find like 80% of the folks are, yes, this is the right person, this is the right decision. And the people that, there's a couple of people in the room that are probably not saying anything and they decide, it's just too, I can't go up again. Everybody else says it must be great, so I must be either missing it or it's just not worth it to go against the group. This happens a lot and we have to be also very careful, there's ways to reduce this. And in our, in the search committee, each member individually scores the applicants. each member individually scores the applicants on their own. And then those scores are put in to, we bring them together and so that you get a view of how many committee members like this candidate. So you've got the scores that show the strongest candidates. We also use the power of one. And we spend a lot of time talking about, if everyone here, there's, we know about power differentials, but in this committee, every person has an equal vote. Every person isn't critical to the outcome. And so, for instance, if you, when we review the applications and you come up with the top perhaps 10 or 15, we have the power of one. Anyone on the committee can champion any candidate, not on that list of the 10 to 15, just to make sure that we didn't miss somebody who was an outstanding candidate. We also, there's a lot of discussions when we go around the room with the committee of saying, you know, why is this discrepancy? Why do we have this group that saw that this individual was amazing? And why, what are some things that others might see that give you pause? Again, making sure that we know we need to hear from every candidate and to give committee members the courage to speak out and say, you know, I think that's really great, but it really, I had some concerns that the person hadn't been a vice president for instruction or that had primarily worked at four-year universities or that had spent just a couple years at colleges. And I just wanted to bring that up. So we spend a lot of time talking about the importance of the power of one and to make sure that if a person, if a committee member sees something, that they say something. And so that we have, we can have a good discussion of that. So it's setting the culture so that we, none of us fall ill to the bandwagon effect because the first five people were excited about the candidate. Next slide. Affinity bias. Okay, this is where, when I look at the applications, I'm kind of, I'm excited because I'm excited by those women that have sort of had, they've worked them way up from the bottom. They've been around a while. They're older, they have more experience. And you know, that they kind of look like me. And I think that that makes a great president. And I'm sure. And we might avoid people that are not like me. But this is where I have to be careful because I've seen, my own feeling is like, I feel myself relating to one of the candidates because I've seen what they've done and I feel like, okay, I really like that candidate. This is where I think that we really need to, it disadvantages a lot of folks because we all have, and this is why it's important to have a very diverse committee, search committee. But this is where you have the opportunity to say, you know, I really like that Jill Wakefield. But as I look at, I'm a little concerned because we have a lot in common and I just want to make sure and check with your committee members that anyone else have any, do you feel like she's a strong candidate? Or did I miss something? Because I really, I do understand that I have an affinity bias and I tend to like people that look and look like me and maybe have had a similar background. To check with your other committee members. Also being open to other committee members who may not have seen the same thing, things that I've overlooked. Because once again, I have to get into my implicit bias and use the facts to say, okay, I really didn't have facts on that. It was sort of how I felt. I just knew it. And then again, if, as you go through the process, our goal is to create a committee that says, you know, I didn't think that person was strong, but I'm feeling like more of a general feeling, yeah, we'd like to know more, interview that. Or, you know, I just jumped on that candidate and I felt so connected. And now that I step back, I realize that Jill really didn't have the experience that we're really looking for. So thanks for that. So, so the affinity, and then there's one more, is the anchoring bias. This happens when we're reviewing the applications that rely too much on pre-existing information that they find before making their decisions. So what might happen as you go through an application and you might see, huh, this person has had a couple of breaks in their career. Oh, well, clearly they can't keep a job. There's something wrong. We shouldn't send them forward. Or this candidate's only been a couple years at several colleges. Well, we want someone who's going to stay. So we really shouldn't move this person forward without knowing what the facts are. Again, a college, maybe a college that they attended or a college that you have great respect for, maybe one of the Aspen-winning colleges to say, okay, this person's been in an Aspen, a college that won the Aspen. So they must be a really great candidate. It's using that piece of information and then expanding to, yes, they must be a great candidate, without having the information, without having the facts. The best, again, is to check yourself. Be sure that we're fully vetting each candidate and evaluating them according to the established criteria, the presidential profile. This is where, if a person might have a concern that someone had worked maybe just two years, two years, two years at different colleges, someone might say in the committee, you know, I see the person has changed jobs. I don't know what that means, but it's something I'd like to explore as in the interview or in the next step. But, you know, I'm intrigued. I might, I'm concerned, but I'm not concerned enough because I don't really know what the story, what the situation is. Again, making sure we're using all the information. And as I'll say probably 100 times is using the presidential profile. That's the information that the board, based on the recommendation of many people, has adopted in terms of selecting the next president. Next slide. Strategies, we've talked about strategies. I've mentioned a number of them. It's really helping the committee members understand the nature of bias and how the mind works. And this is not good or bad. It's just how our unconscious works and we all have it. And we all just need to be aware and to really talk about self-awareness, increasing your own self-awareness. Maybe you'll take some of the association tests, but also really starting to think as you review those applications when you see someone that you really love or someone that you really don't like at all. It's an opportunity for self-reflection to look at, how do, what are my biases when I look through these and really spend some time talking about them. And then having opportunities to discussion with the committee, with others about how we can share, either share those biases or how we cannot let them dominate where our recommendations go. So allow, once again, is allowing the committee relying on the different perspectives and viewpoints of your committee members. And with the committee, we work really hard in building a committee where there's respect and openness and really encouragement to hear the views of every committee member. The next slide. Following are some of the questions we ask our committee members just to ask when they're, when they're begin serving on the committee. These are questions that you're asking with your, on campus right now with a number of the diversity initiatives. But really, when we talk about the right fit, that's one that, that's a loaded word. When I might talk about right fit, I'm talking about the presidential profile. But too often, it means someone who might look like me, someone who has a certain amount of skills, someone that, it's, it's a word that's misused a lot. So it's a word we don't talk about a lot. We don't use. Your candidate pool will be diverse and you'll have that information so you'll know the diversity of your pool. But I'm confident you will have a very diverse pool. But that's a good question for the board and others to ask is, is this, is this, are the semifinalists diverse? Is the candidate pool diverse? And then I think we ask our committee members to think about their own hiring in the past, both successful and unsuccessful. What work, did they have any of implicit biases in place? So in preparation, these are all areas to explore as we put the committee together to do the very important work of helping the board with the selection of a next president. So I think that's it. We had some reflections that we'll ask the committees to look at, the committee members to look at. But this is really the session that we will have as that part of that first meeting. And as we start, and then there'll be questions. And so I'm wondering if there's any questions that you might have or I think we're going to talk about the whole process a little bit, but.
Does anybody have any questions for Jill in terms of the anti-bias training? We'll just focus on that for now. Austin.
Actually, more just a comment. Yeah, no, I'm really glad that not only our committee members are going through this training and we are. And yeah, I just wish more employers kind of had this perspective and had this training prior to their hirings and so forth. So I really appreciate the involvement of everyone here. And this is really good. This is really positive and I really look forward to this process.
Thank you.
For anyone else, questions or comments? Holly.
I really appreciate that you added in safe spaces. That's super important in this process. And oftentimes, when we are on selection committees, we're swayed by the majority opinion. So I really appreciate that you added safe spaces. It's kind of hidden in there, but that is so important because if we don't feel safe, we won't be willing to give our opinion. So thank you for that. That was awesome.
Thank you for that confirmation, for reinforcing that. So that just reinforces my role in that. So thank you.
Rosie.
You know, I found myself wondering as we went through this training, it would be interesting, I mean, once it can be confirmed that there's a diverse pool of candidates, it would be interesting if the advisory committee and members of the board's very first exposure to the candidates could be without names, without information about gender, without any of that background. I'm sure that's probably not being done, but it just struck me as it would be interesting to see how a search like that would work.
So I've thought about that. And one of the challenges is that there's so much information because the pools are pretty small and it'll be easy to see who it is by either where they worked or whatever. But, but I've thought about that and I, there's just, it's, we make, and we're able, I think we've never done that in a process and we, but I think because we spend a lot of time talking about it, that the committee members, at least my experience, have done a really good job in finding diverse, really diverse pools. And so, you know, I actually thought about that. There's just too much in there that would, you could say, I've been the VP at this institution, kind of thing like that. So it's a, I like your thinking.
Mike?
Mute?
There we go, there we go. So I was just wondering if ACCT has considered this training aside from selection? Because it occurs to me that it's valuable in a number of different settings and ways. And I'm already thinking about places where I can apply it that don't necessarily have to do with the selection process.
Yeah, I'm not sure we thought about that, but I'm thinking that even at some of the Congress, that might be something to take back and include. With so many colleges having a VP or diversity or equity or something like that, somewhere include in some of the training. So thank you.
Steve?
I just wanted to echo Rosie's comment. I work at the University of Oregon. I think most folks know that we have a policy now in effect for, I don't know, a year, maybe a little longer for all, for the names of folks to be scrubbed from their applications during the, like the first and second, you know, reviews of their applications. Once they become semifinalists and come to campus and, you know, of course, those things can't be preserved forever. But I'm actually chairing a search right now at the University of Oregon, fairly high level. And as Jill says, it's so easy to, you know, to find, oh, so-and-so says that they worked at blah-bity-blah college. You can easily go and Google it and figure out exactly who it is. So there are workarounds, of course, that folks can employ. We generally just ask people to adhere to the process and we explain why. And I guess at the end of the day, it's on an honor system. But in my direct experience in the past year, undoubtedly, it makes a, it makes an impact. And I've also been told, just based on the research, that it's considered a best practice. And I will just back Rosie and say, I think we ought to try that.
Holly?
Thank you. I have to say that when I seen this training on the agenda, that I was expecting that we would actually take an implicit biased assessment. And I'm just wondering, Jill, if you have that in the plans for us or even the ad hoc committee, the advisory committee, if they are actually going to assess themselves so that they can determine or learn what their biases are. I've been on several selection committees, both at the University of Oregon, and I just found that so powerful. And even in my current position, when we actually took, and I can't remember what it was called, an assessment and I was shocked. I was like, wow, I have some biases, you know? You know, we all know we have them. But when I did see this in the lineup and your training, I was like so looking forward to taking it. So just wondering if that is going to be part of the selection process.
We definitely could figure out a way to do that with the committee, maybe, in fact, maybe prior to the committee meeting or something. I could, I'll talk with your, the chair of the committee about how we might want to do that.[1612.12]
I have myself in the queue and then I'll go to you, Rosie. Okay. So I I did just want to clarify, Jill, that this board what has and is asking for anti-bias training for ourselves, because we will play a really fundamental role in this process. We'll ultimately make the decision and we'll be involved in the interview process. And so I feel like this was a really good introduction and I'm really happy to see what you'll be doing to guide the process with the committee. But it might be beneficial because I've heard from both. I've heard from board members that they wanted this really early on, but that we would benefit from it later as well. We might loop back around and do a little more work on this as we start at the point that we engage very fully with the process. Rosie?
Well, I just was going to observe that I was following along on my own iPad, looking at your PowerPoint as as you were presenting. And it looked as if the the IAT or whatever was a hot link in there, which would enable us to actually go and take the test or whatever it's called. And I I think would be I think Holly's idea is a great idea. I mean, I
I agree.
It'd be great if all of us would take the opportunity to do that. I'm sure it'd be very interesting personally to to see how it comes out. So it looks like it's right there and available.
Yes, and I I would encourage everybody to do it. I I've done it a couple of times and it it was really interesting each time that I did it. I'm going to go to Steve and then Holly.
Holly, I was just going to back your suggestion. And I I like lots of people, it sounds like I have also done, you know, the IAT. And for those who haven't, if there are any out there, like, there's lots of different tests. You can take one of the tests, you know, your biases as it applies to sexuality or skin color or, you know, so many things. And I've done it a handful of times. It's been a while. In any case, nothing persuaded me more that that this was valuable stuff than the results of my test, which I shall keep confidential. I I will I I will commit right here and now to taking the test one more time before I look at the applications.
Holly?
Thank you, Steve, Chair Fagala, and Rosie. I did I just think it's so powerful. So I'm hoping that it has to be inclusive. I think so for one person to take it and not the other. I I don't think would be valuable or helpful. I I just think that it is just in we need the committee needs to take it. In addition to that, I had another question. Oh, there was a part in your presentation where you said your applicants will be diverse. And I'm just wondering, you said it very firmly, Jill. And so I'm just wondering, are we doing that? Because we are, are we going after that forcefully? I mean, how can you guarantee that? It may or may not be diverse. Or are we gonna wait until it is diverse? I I mean, you said that really firm, your applicant pool will be diverse. Is that just one of your goals? Because it's not always that it's going to be diverse. And if we're doing a nationwide search, you know, we get what we get, right? And so are we going to keep searching until it is diverse? I I don't want to be skewed from, yes, we want a diverse pool. You know, we do. But I don't want to go into it like we're not going to stop until it's diverse because we're going to get the most qualified applicants and the most interested applicants. You know, whoever applies is going to be interested in this position and willing to relocate and live or accept the the duties of this position. I just don't want it to get to the point to where oh, we have to have a, you know, it is what it is. We're going to get whoever's interested in applying for this position in the pool. So when you say your pool will be diverse, what would you mean by that? Is that one of your goals?
So we'll be talking about kind of the process and how ACCT conducts the process. And so it'll kind of adds up. And I would say that one reason I say that is that the last four searches I've done, the pool has been very diverse. Now, I have to say it wasn't in Eugene, Oregon. So I don't know if that's an impact or not, but the the ones that I have done across the country have been I one reason, one reason ACCT is pretty successful is we have a really good pool. And my key is I reach out to people that often aren't looking for jobs. They're very happy in their jobs. And I've also talked to a lot of candidates, diverse candidates who have maybe been second, third, or fourth. I mean, and these are people I stay with because once you get to the finals, these are great candidates. It's just something there. And here we talk about fit, but we know that one that decision, it's nothing they would do differently. And so I've developed a pretty good pool of candidates who are interested. I go after them. I call them. I recruit them. And I've met them over the years in different searches. So I have a real sense of who's out there looking for jobs. There's good people. And I so, no, I can't guarantee it, but it's just with what's happened, I would say what the with the searches I've done. I've had, there've been amazing candidates and really diverse. And I would expect the same for Lain Community College. And you should expect that also.
Thank you.
I I'm not sure I answered your question, but
No, you did. You did. I appreciate your hard work that you have to do. It's a hard sale for Eugene, Oregon.
I don't know. I I need to talk
No, 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 just because of the history of, you know, for people of color and I speak for my community. So
Okay.
I appreciate you and 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 glad and looking forward to working with you. Thank you.
Good question. Thank you.
And and so that might be a good transition to beginning to start to talk about the process. And so we are so just to remind everybody, you have an ad hoc committee. That's me, Steve, and Rosie. And we 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 did meet with Deborah and Jill and Tammy to talk about the process that Jill was presenting. And we we worked quite a bit on the the search committee, the advisory committee that you see here. And we really want to emphasize that it is an advisory committee. The the board has the decision making in in this process, right? So but what we're going to look at is a draft. And as an ad hoc committee, we're looking for your feedback tonight, right? So we'd love to hear what your thinking is and and we are hoping to move things forward. But we also want to remind the board that we're, you know, we're working as an ad hoc committee so that we can be flexible and nimble and keep moving this process forward in a timely way. But we will continue to report to you and to to get your input on things. So Austin, do you do you think it's a question that could wait until after we hear about? Okay, great. Thank you. So I'm going to turn it over to Deborah and Jill and let them give us a short overview of what we have. And I know everybody has this in their board docs as well. So everybody has had the opportunity to preview it.
Thanks. So we have the draft presidential search timeline. And Jill, you should have, this is the the last version that you saw also, but I'm glad to share my screen if that's easier for folks to take a look at it also. And I think we were just hoping to kind of walk through the individual steps to sort of talk about whether there were potential decision points or for ideas that board members had about them.
Great. And and so if you want to share it, Deborah, that would be very useful and give us, everybody's got it in their packet. So you don't have to read through it word for word. Just give us a a high level overview.
Sure. And can you see it now on screen?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
So we start out, this is a this first month here is a pretty quick timeline. So starting out in September, September 15th, the board approving appointments to the Presidential Search Advisory Committee. And that's sort of the second thing that we can look at together is the recommendations of the ad hoc committee. October 6th through 12th, and remember, the first day of classes on our campus is September 27th. So we'll be having faculty back on campus and people back from vacations and everyone working five days a week. So looking at possibly starting the public forums to gather information about from the campus and from external community members to talk about what they would like to see in the profile. And so Jill would be hosting a number of different forums. And we could also look at surveys and other kind of feedback mechanisms for that feedback. On the 13th, the October 13th, we would be looking at our first search advisory committee meeting. And that would include training and orientation, the anti-bias training that we just discussed and whatever else kind of is involved in that. And then the committee would review and edit a draft presidential profile that Jill would provide based on the feedback received. That would be kind of a long meeting. I think we have few meetings, but they're sort of long. And so obviously, it could be a lot of work to review and discuss the draft presidential profile. On October 21st, we have a board meeting scheduled. And so the hope would be that the board would be able to review the committee's work, make any edits and approve the presidential profile to move forward so that we could start with recruitment. And then we'd look at posting and, you know, there's a few months in there where we would be marketing, actively marketing the posting. Jill would be doing her outreach and we'd be looking for applications to come in. Then we'd be looking at a second meeting after the committee has a chance to score all of the individual applications from the candidates. And selection of eight to 10 semifinalists, that's just sort of a a rough number. That's sort of a manageable number. So the board certainly can give direction about how many finalists you'd like to see. And then right now, the the draft timeline says Presidential Search Advisory Committee conducts interviews. And that'll be a decision that the board can make, whether you'd like to do that as a full board, as was done the last in the last presidential search, or whether you'd like the Presidential Search Advisory Committee to do that on your behalf and to forward three to five finalists for further consideration and in-person interviews. And then ending in March with visits from the finalist candidates on campus and possibly a board visit to the candidates, finalist candidates institutions and ending with after spring break, hopefully announcement of the selection.
Great. Thanks, Deborah. Would you want to stop the share for now? So I'm going to suggest we we talk about this first and and then we can take a look at the advisory committee. Is everybody okay with that? If we discuss this piece first and then move on? Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. Any feedback for your ad hoc committee? You know, and also keeping in mind, we can this is, we're not going to write this in stone and sign it in blood. We can, we were flexible humans. That's going to be the mantra for the coming year, I'm sure. Angela?
Thank you. And so I wondered sort of Jill commented, and thank you so much for the presentation, Jill. It was really helpful and informative. I really appreciated your comment about the power of one and how a member of the committee can advocate that if after the final initial semifinal pool has been selected for another candidate to be considered or something like this. And I'm wondering if if we could build in some sort of opportunity for the board to do something like that, for the for the board to be potentially more involved in in the narrowing process. I know we don't want to be we don't want to have all of us on the advisory committee. But I could foresee a situation where we might be really interested in in some candidates who don't make it past the advisory committee.
Thank you. I'm going to move on to Austin and then Mike.
A really quick, was it February 17th or an 18th that we might decide whether if we want a essentially a recommendation from the committee or a full board interview? Was it the 17th and 18th?
Yeah, it was 17th to 18th that the Presidential Search Advisory Committee would interview with semifinalists. And then it says after the final interview, the committee deliberates and selects three to five finalists.
Gotcha. And for us to decide whether if we want to participate in that, we would do that long before, like, for instance, the February 16th work session that we have scheduled, which is right before that. February 16th is when we have a scheduled work session. And we would make that decision well before that, right?
Well, this is the process that Jill has presented to us so far. And so we're looking for feedback now on it. And we're going to be looking for feedback on the draft committee. So if you have feedback about it. But yeah, we we can, we can flex things. I mean, we may have to slow things down. Who knows? We've got a you know, we're going to be doing this in the middle of the pandemic. So
Lisa, can I offer an observation?
Yes.
Based on Angela's and and Austin's comments, I just would like to share that the last time we went through this process, when we got to this stage of the process, the and the advisory, the then advisory committee came up with a prioritized list of something like nine or 10 candidates. When the board had the opportunity to review that list, at that point in time, that board decided we want we want to interview all of them. In other words, it felt the board that hired Marge felt strongly that the advisory committee had done a really good job of forwarding that pool. And they wanted that the board wanted to honor their judgment by by doing a face-to-face interview with all nine or 10 or whatever it was, Deborah, I don't remember. But so so one of the things we talked about in our ad hoc committee meeting is this is a flexible process. I mean, this is this is sort of the outline that Jill is bringing to us, which is standard practice. But as we go through, I I think even Jill would would agree that at the end of the day, the board has to do what it feels it must do to make the best possible decision for Lain. So if we get to that point in the process and board members feel like they they want to see all of the finalists, that's an option. And so I think, you know, we should all just keep an open mind as we go through this. I think what we're looking for tonight is, are we way off track in terms of the steps along the way that are being recommended?
Thank you for that clarification. Mike, followed by Holly.
So a couple of points to Rosie's last question. I think that the the major benchmark points on the in the process that have been identified are good and they're the the ones that I would expect to be present in a in a good search process. So yes, Rosie, I think that we're on track. The other thing is that I saw two places where there was opportunity, and there may be more for broader public input. And I I knew I do see that there are advisory committee i- is intentionally reaching out to a broad set of folks. But I think that we have a community here that is going to want to participate and engage with this process. And I I think it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we invite them to do that. And we do so in a robust way. Whether that, well, in both areas where we're asking for help in creating the profile. And then the the second one in March, where we're asking for input on finalists. I I just think we'd be really missing an opportunity if we don't invite, if we don't actively invite public engagement from our our broad community, at least on those two points. So that's all I've got for that.
And and I I will also say that I I I know when we get to the finalists, that there's a part built in where they will come, they will meet stakeholders, they'll do presentations, and we can collect feedback at that time, too. Is that is that kind of what you're thinking, Mike, when it's later in the process?
Yeah, the one on March 7th. Yeah, I just want to make sure that when we talk about stakeholders, that we're very broad in our definition of stakeholders.
Okay, great. Thank you for that feedback. Holly?
Trustee Mike, thank you so much for that input. And so I have a couple questions. So I'm looking at February 17 to 18 selects. So my hats are off to you all, the ad hoc committee. So thank you for stepping up and agreeing to be participating in such an amazing position. I don't know how we're going to pray replace President Hamilton. So I know you all have a hard job ahead of you. But I'm looking at the committee deliberates and selects three to five finalists. And I am referring to that's the dog. I'm referring to the presentation that we just had by Jill, who mentioned that we may have 40 to 50. Am I getting it right? Applications? What's the the average? I can't remember.
I, the last one I've had were 50 to 60.
That's a big number for us to only select three to five finalists to forward to the board for further consideration. Is that normal?
Yes. That's usually because one thing is on your search advisory committee. You have a board chair and at least one other board member who serve on that committee. So you have board representatives there, plus you have your ad hoc committee. But the first job is is their job is to to get it down to sort of a more manageable number. So often though, interview anyone from eight to 12, which might be known as semifinalists. And, you know, that's a tough process. But but if you've got a clear presidential profile, that's going to drive it. And then what you might ask is for five or six. The board asks for the number of finalists and then usually the committee, if it has something that fits in, and it's a hard decision. It's really hard because he's a really usually great candidate. if it has something that fits in, and it's a hard decision. It's really hard because these are really usually great candidates. They try to get it to five or so, but I've had five at one campus, five, four, or three. And one reason is it's that time of year and it's very competitive. And some of your most competitive candidates are in other searches. So you don't want to have the person you love the most, uh, or, and no one else, uh, be torn between another job. So usually, um, four to six. And that usually, if everybody's done their job and, um, you've got a good process that it, that it's worked. It's worked in the searches that I've done and I think almost all the searches that ACC does.
Okay, thank you for that. And then I'm going down to where, um, jet, March. Um, there was a point that where it said, we pick our first choice. Where, what number was that?
Oh, was it at March fourteenth, the, the site visit?
March fourteenth, the board conducts a site visit to the first choice candidate's institution? First choice or first and second choice? Cause I mean, you know, in the event, I mean, I'm sure we're going to have alternates, right? In the event that someone, um, declines our offer or, you know, got another offer or whatever. The fir- only the first choice candidate? And I remember-
It's usually, you might end up with two. Often it's just to confirm the choice that you've made. You've, you've made your choice. You've, you've really felt like this is the right candidate and usually it's just to confirm, it's that final, yeah, the final check. Um, up till then, you say it's a top four or five. You've had, you've got input from the community, from the internal and external community. You've done, you've, uh, background searches, you've got all that information, the board deliberates. And then, uh, sometimes they don't, you don't do a visit to the campus. Um, it needs to happen very quickly because the word gets out, but usually it's with one. Now, if it was between two candidates, because usually we don't use the visit to choose between candidates. Um, and by then you also have a very good sense, the person who's the finalist kind of knows who they are. And they've let you know that they're still in or not at that point.
Hmm, okay. I, I've never been involved in a search where we only invited the first choice. And, and I want you to know that I was paying attention to your presentation. And I remember you saying in implicit bias training that we know, you know, you, you pretty much know. But there's always that, I, I don't know. I, I feel like I would be comfortable with at least the two people.
Out of the five finalists, say, out of the five finalists, as a pro- as the board deliberates, say you end up with, so you've got five, four or five finalists, you've got input from all those folks. Um, you've got reference checks and then the board deliberates. Uh, maybe it's three, four, or five. And then usually, and you could, it's your search. Um, usually at that point is we want this candidate, uh, you all kind of come up with, uh, this is the candidate that, that is our first choice. Let's just double check to make sure that's still the first choice. But if, if you felt like you needed to, to do two searches, you could have, you could send one person, one, one board member, one, and one the other. Just has to take place quite quickly.
I, I, I guess what I'm trying to get at is to avoid a failed search and then we have to start and start all over again. Uh, my other, my final question, thank you for that clarification. And I am asking the ad hoc committee to maybe jump that up to six to, six to, I don't know, anyway, for your finalists. As an organization and we trust you and we selected you to lead this search, thank you for your work and for your commitment to inclusivity and diversity. Um, I'm just curious, um, I would be remiss if I didn't ask this. Um, in your search and on your team, do you have, um, a diverse team? Or is it just you that they will be interfacing with, the candidates? Um, I just think that in a search, especially in a place like Eugene, Oregon, with the history that, you know, whatever it is, what it is, um, are they interfacing with folks? Cause you say you're going to have a diverse, um, pool. Um, are they interfacing with people who might be diverse? Um, and, and I don't know how else to say this, on your team. Um, I, I think that makes a huge impact when people are trying to decide to, um, get up and leave and, you know, uproot and, and, and plant seeds in another community that has, um, such a history as Oregon. Um, so I'm just curious.
So I am the primary contact with candidates. I reach out. I have, you know, built a pool of potential strong candidates across the country. However, I, when I'm talking to candidates, often I will connect them with someone in the community. Um, because especially when it starts questions about what is it like to live in Eugene? Um, I'm, uh, an African-American candidate, I'm a Latinx candidate. I'd like to know, I'd like to talk to someone who lives in the community. Um, so I've, I've done that on the last search, um, connected, um, some of the candidates with individuals in your community. But I'm, uh, we have a diverse team back in Washington DC. Um, I'm the, uh, search consultant for, um, Lane Community College.
Thank you. And, and you don't live in this community, am I correct?
I don't. I'm from, I'm born and raised, I'm born and raised in Eugene when I was young, so, um, and I spend, but it's interesting because I, like I said, the last search is like then, oh, go ahead.
I know we're running out of time, but I'm just curious where you're going to find those people at.
Yeah.
Who are you going to consult with to find those people?
So I think that, um, Jill, Jill will be working closely with us, Holly. So Jill will be working closely with us. Um, so I, I do want to just do a check-in with the board. Um, I, I feel like I heard a lot of feedback for a lot of this process that is happening, starting later, except for, Mike, I know you want to make sure that when we're working on the, presidential profile, that we're having a very robust community engagement process. Um, I, but again, we, 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 we're, we're hearing the feedback and a lot of it is about the later part. I'm wondering if this earlier part about the timeline for getting the profile done and getting us to accepting applications, including the feedback about making sure the, the outreach is robust for the presidential profile. I, I've, I'm curious if, if this seems like a good place to start and we can continue to take feedback and move things forward. I have Mike and then Angela.
So, uh, the answer generally, uh, Lisa is yes from me. And, and Jill, I just want to check a perception. Um, my, my perception from what you said is that you're not starting fresh, uh, starting to look for a candidate pool. But you have been nurturing, uh, these people, seeing that they have leadership potential and, um, trying to help them develop that potential for maybe years. So, so you have, uh, a, a deep pool that you can call on already. That's, that's, I just want to check my perception.
Yes.
Thanks. And I, and I would assume ACCT has that as well. So, um, Angela?
Thank you. Um, in general, the timeline looks reasonable to me. And not having participated in this type of search before, I don't have much to compare it to, but I don't see any sort of, red flags or anything like that. And so hopefully that's helpful feedback. And, uh, I don't actually know what to picture when we talk about a presidential profile. Um, and I assume we'll talk about that a lot more later. And, but that's, that's probably the, the blurryest thing on this timeline for me, is what that actually would look like.
Jill, did you want to flesh that out a little bit?
Yeah, I could talk a little bit about that. It's usually about three or four pages, has a general description of the institution, the community, um, things that make it unique, that make Lane a little unique, some awards, areas that you're known for, partnerships, um, about how many high school kids go there and just some of the pride points. Um, and then you, uh, we get into ideal characteristics of the president. A communicator, advocate for students, that kind of thing. So you, you're into, um, ideal characteristics. And then there's a section on challenges and opportunities. And those are the same questions we ask at all the, um, at all the, uh, the forums. And then we often, we have one, an online versions where anybody can come in and those are the three questions, um, just a minute here. Are, uh, oh, are, um, what are the major challenges and opportunities facing Lane Community College in the next three to five years? What ideal characteristics should the next president of Lane Community College possess? What additional information, um, would you like to provide as a search gets underway? So those are really the three areas and we take from those three areas, we put them, um, pull them all together to make sure that we capture the themes. Not everybody's comment, um, and sometimes we'll get 300 people that will use the online. Um, and I would say you get quite a few people that come to the forums. You want a community forum, students, faculty, staff. Um, we pulled together the themes, so not everyone will see their exact comment, but we get, we pick up the themes and to look at what are the strengths, the challenges and opportunities, and then the, um, the ideal characteristics that we're looking for in the new president. So three to four pages.
Great. And, and Angela, you'll see that the board edits reviews and approves that as well. And there, there will be more decision points that Jill will discuss with us. You know, things like, you know, what, what do we think about having to, you know, um, to have, you know, say somebody must have a PhD. Um, will we include an equity statement? Ask candidates to include an equity statement, those types of things. So we will, we will be making the final decision on that also. Holly?
Thank you for that clarification, Chair Fragola. Um, that is exactly what I was going to say. Those seem like really broad, questions. And so my question was, how will you incorporate? Um, how do you embrace diversity or, you know, so thank you for that. It's very important, very important right now. Um, so, thank you.
Thanks, Holly. And I see Rosie gave you a thumbs up on that. So, um, so I, I'm, I'm hearing that we, we can start to move the process forward. Um, and, you know, definitely I, I'm, I can encourage people to, if you have additional feedback, to email. You can email me and we'll, we'll bring it to the ad hoc committee. This is not set in stone. We're going to keep working on it. Um, but we do want to get things rolling. And, um, so that brings us to the advisory committee. And so, um, we spent a lot of time discussing how to narrow it down. I, I'm amazed we got down to less than, um, fifteen. Like I, I was really impressed by us. So, um, can, is that an advisory committee that we can start recruiting for? Because we, we would really like to start doing that so that we can take a look at the fifteenth and, um, start appointing. Austin?
I am perfectly fine with the setup of the committee. Uh, I think what's just missing is, um, uh, that we got the chair and vice chair, but not the additional, um, LCC board member in the list. So yeah, other than that, uh, it's great to see the not only staff representation, uh, union representation and so forth. So.
Steve?
Uh, well, so I'm, I'm the guy who stepped off of the committee. I'll just answer. So I, I, I chose to do so as voluntary, partly, uh, just to demonstrate that I'm, that if we're, you know, if we're going to be working hard at narrowing, the, the total number, keeping it small, that I too was willing to, you know, remove myself. I wasn't going to give myself something that I was going to take away from somebody else. So that was part of it. And also that you'll see that the committee size right now is thirteen people. Jill's recommendation was twelve to fifteen. We, uh, Jill, you actually missed this. I think you stepped off the call at the very last minute. And we took, I believe was your advice to look at the composition of those, of that thirteen, once the invitations go out and people respond, right? And, and, um, if the, if the balance is too heavily female or male or white or black, you know, whatever, we would use those remaining couple of positions to try and rebalance to get, um, the kind of composition on the committee that I think we would all be more, um, happy with. So that's the reason for withholding, you know, some small number of positions that could be allocated at the end after we see what it actually looks like.
Yes. And so our intent is that, um, we want to make this committee diverse and that we have these, these categories, but we, we want to be really conscious of, in the process of reaching out to kind of these stakeholder groups, that we also are looking for diverse candidates as we make up the composition in addition to the, um, stakeholder groups. Thanks for that clarification, Steve. Holly?
Um, um, thank you for that. And to Rosie and Chair Fragola and, uh, Steve, thank you all so much for stepping up, um, for this task. Um, I'm just wondering if the board will ever know who your advisory committee is at some point.
So the, the intent is to, um, if, if this composition looks like a, a good draft to work with, Deborah's going to start tomorrow reaching out to some of the organizations. And some of them like LCC EA, LCC EF, they will, um, have a designate. Some of them, um, we will be reaching out to an organization. Some of them, like the, you know, the student identity unions will be asking for support, um, from, uh, you know, the, the people who, the staff and faculty who work with those groups to do some recruitment. And we might need to look at the students who are interested. Um, but we want to get started on that right away. And then on the September fifteenth, we would bring that back to, to the board.
Thank you. And then those groups, are they inclusive of, of, I mean, there's so many groups on campus. So how do you pick which groups you're going to? LGBTQ, T, you know, the BSU, whatever. How do you pick which student, um, voices will be, um, included?
So the student government, um, has a position. And then when we say student identity groups, that does mean a specific set of, of student groups at the college. Is there somebody who could list those groups for us?
Mindy Do is in the room and she may be able to, but I can, I can try to start for you. So we have the Native American Student Association or NASA, um, the Asian Pacific Islander Student Union or APISU, uh, Black Student Union, um, Portis, is it Portisabi or so? No, that's the, that's the, um,
Metra.
Yeah, yes, Metra, thank you. Um, which is, um, Latinx students. Um, I'm not exactly sure what the, um, LGBTQ Association is on campus right now. They changed their name last year. Um, but certainly they would be, um, included there too. So I think the goal was to solicit, um, recommendations for, for students who, who would be interested from those areas. And then, um, to select a, a student who would be able to commit to participate.
Thanks, Deb.
We also have a Muslim student group.
Oh, thanks, Greg.
Great, thanks Greg. Um, Mindy, I see your hand is up. Did you want to add anybody?
Yes, thank you. And, and great job, Deborah. You got them all except for our veterans.
Thank you. Thanks.
Great. And I see Austin's hand is up, followed by Angela. Thank you, everybody.
Excellent. Um, Jill, the question for Jill, actually. Um, so of it, um, how important is geographic, uh, diversity within our, uh, so obviously, uh, growing up in Lane County, you know Eugene is different from Florence, Florence is different from Oak Ridge, oh, and so forth. How important is that geographic in your past experiences with recruiting, uh, or with the advisory committees? How important is geographic, um, uh, diversity in, um, in the hiring process?
So you want to have all kinds of diversity. But I think with your different communities that you serve, there's ways of engaging them, which may be in the development of the profile. Uh, it may be, you know, someone, you know, meeting with them, those groups, making sure that they have an opportunity when the finalists are here. I think that, um, that's- I think that that's the most critical piece is keeping them engaged in some way. I don't think you need to have someone on every piece of the, every part of your, the community that you serve. I think that would be pretty challenging. But to just represent that, that your service area is pretty broad, someone that represents that.
That's it. So that's where the community engagement is important in.
Yeah.
Communities. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Angela and then Mike?
Uh, thank you. It just occurred to me as we were looking at the advisory committee draft outline. In looking back at the timeline and sort of looking at the advisory committee, telling discussions and selecting candidates. Is that process like a consensus process or is it a sort of majority vote process? Or does it vary based on the school?
You mean, how will we make the decision at the September 15th board meeting? Or how will the ad hoc committee make the decision?
How will the advisory committee decide who gets into the, who gets into the finalist?
How will they decide on the semifinalists? Is that the question?
I'm asking about their decision-making process. The, the search advisory committee makes decisions along the way about who to forward to the board. And I'm curious how they make those decisions.
So, so the process, each, each committee member interviews every application in light of the presidential profile. They, they would recommend, then on each scoring sheet, they keep track of the strengths and the concerns. And then they can do it in a couple of ways. We'll decide, one is, yes, I'm really excited about this candidate. Number two might be, I have questions. And number three is, no, this is not, this is not the right candidate. Or other times they use scores, they use numbers. And so they pull all, we pull together the scores of all the candidates. And then we get a sense of where they're the strongest. So it might be with 20 people or something like that you have that are the strongest candidates. And then they review each one of those candidates. They spend time chatting or talking about the strengths that each one brings, any concerns. And then at the end, they, they say, I would like to invite this individual for an interview. And it's pretty much unanimous at that point who they want to invite. And then that's how they get down to, I don't know, tw- eight to 12 or something like that. And then at that point, depending on the process, they bring each of those candidates in for an interview. And then after all the interviews are done, they keep notes on the interviews. And then they go through the process again so that it's really kind of a vote. All, everyone has a vote.
Okay, thank you. So I am going to suggest that we start with, that we, that we move this draft forward for the advisory committee, knowing that we've intentionally held two spots on it if some additions need to come forward. And we're going to be meeting as an ad hoc committee. I've been taking notes and we will continue to come back to you and ask for input and reports. So we'll keep coming back to this process all along the way. So we do have another probably good hour and 20 minutes, hour and a half of agenda items for this evening. I guess this is what happens when we take August off. So I am going to suggest that we take a five-minute break. I'm going to try and be better about that this year, y'all. So let's take a five-minute break. And we will come back at 7:39. And Jill, thank you so much.
You, are, are you done with me for now?
Yes.
Thank you all. It was lovely to meet you all. I look forward to working with you and send me your hard questions. These are, these are good questions. I'm really know that it's going to be, I'm going to enjoy working with you and I'm committed to, to helping, it was helpful today to understand what your questions and concerns are. So I'll work with your ad hoc. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Jill, I feel like we're going to be seeing a lot of you.
I think so.
Thank you. All right. Okay, great. Welcome back, everybody. And I, I just want to say thank you for that really great conversation, both about the anti-bias training and thinking about that process. I, I, one of my goals as board chair this coming year is for our work sessions to be opportunities for us to really have good dialogue as a board together. And so to have opportunities to really discuss things together and dig deeper and reflect on the information that we're hearing. So being more actively engaged with each other in our work sessions. So thank you. See that it looks like Angela's unmuted, but I'm not sure if she's back with us yet. And Holly. But I am going to go ahead and at least introduce our next topic. And I have to say, Richard, I can't tell when you're there, when you're not, when it's your photo and when it's really you. It's a good, good, good.
I'll, I'll smile.
Yeah, a good screensaver there, whatever that thing is called. I had some second grade students that used to try to fool me that they were in class by taking a picture and posting it. So I can usually figure it out. So next on our agenda is, Richard Plot is going to give us an up, update and an overview of the accreditation cycle that we're going to be experiencing in the coming year. And we will also have time at our board meeting to hear additional information because as a board, we will play a role in this process. So. Richard, you want to go ahead and get started?
Thank you and good evening, everyone. And we are in the closing throes of another seven-year accreditation cycle. This is our year seven. Every seven years, members of the Northwest Commission on Colleges and Universities have to submit a full self-validation report and go through the site visit, which we will do in October. And then we will hear back from the commission in the early parts of the winter, tending in the spring for affirmation status and next steps. I'm going to give a quick share to my screen here so we can move. I think I've got everything loaded up. Just need to get to the right PowerPoint. And we can start from the beginning. You know, if this is clear for everybody. The websites that you can find many of the materials on that we have prepared over the last year are here on our accreditation webpage on our lanecc.edu. If you're looking for some more particulars on our accrediting commission, it is here at their website, what we call nukeu.org. As you have time, I would encourage you to go and look at the Nukeu. We are under the new set of accreditation precepts that they have engineered for our enjoyment, so to speak.
Richard, is it possible to make that bigger?
I can certainly work on that. Let me see. Just a second. How about if I presented it in this manner?
Sure. That, that does, no, that's small now, but it is, it is really pretty small. Yeah.
Okay. Let me see if I can. Does that help at all?
You want to go back to presentation mode?
Yeah, let's see. Does that make it larger?
A tiny bit, but let's go ahead and keep moving.
Okay. One of our students that worked with us is, was kind enough to make a visual for us that we referred to from time to time. In the process with our accrediting commission on the seven-year cycle, each year down here, we have a small annual report that we're required to provide. Most of the annual reports in each of these years is facts and figures that are common. Enrollment, employment with our faculty, staff, management, things that you'd find in iPads that we annually report to the federal government and the Department of Ed. However, in year one, in year three, and in year seven here, we have to provide a full self-report. This year's self-report in year seven is on institutional effectiveness and it also focuses on student learning outcomes and the assessment of our program instruction. The, the, the focus on that particular for this time is how we have done in the year of the pandemic and how we're prepared to eventually move out of the pandemic and adjust to the expanded online learning environment that we have. So there will be quite a, quite a bit of information on that with coming forth at the 15th, when we delve a little deeper into some of the parts of this. But all schools in the commission's membership will be required to address those two things. This is how we look in this seven-year cycle. Fortunately, our cycle, if we start at the year 2000, we just count seven years. And that makes it easy for us to keep up and see where we're going. So 27, 2014, here we are in 2021. We'll be back in 2028. So it makes it an easy count. We submitted the prior seven-year report. Recommendations were implemented, but we were reaffirmed. We had the self-report on year one in 2016. At that time, there was a warning issued for student learning and assessment. They marked some improvements they would like to see. And so we began working on those. In 2017, that was our third year mid-cycle report. After the report was reviewed, that following spring, in 2018, the warning that was issued here in 2016 was removed. So there was fine work done by the group to get us off that warning cycle. The annual report was given in 2019, similar to what you would see in iPads. In 2020, our policies, regulations and financial review was accomplished. We submitted the year six report. We heard back from the vice president at Nukeu that they were so pleased with the report that they're using it as a model report for year six. We were very excited about that and gave us a good springboard to move into our year seven. As we move forth, our year seven report has been submitted. There's a Google Doc. There's also the website that can be visited to make sure that you get a copy. We are now prepping for our October 25th, 27th. This was planned as a virtual visit in January of this year. They did revisit the possibility of having an onsite visit, but due to the Delta variant, all visits will remain virtual for the remainder of the year. So we will be setting up the technology to make sure that everybody involved has a chance to participate with our chair and with the other officers on the site visit committee, with the staff, students and faculty and the Board of Education during their virtual visit. In 2022, we will hear back from them and the cycle will reboot. And any of the directions, a focus report that they might want or not would be shared at that time. And the timeline for those reports would be shared if there was anything additional that the site visit thought necessary. This was to make sure that we were well-prepared in the presentation of the year seven report. We made sure that we had a good collaborative effort. We had a leadership team, multiple work groups. There was a coordinating team to help with the barriers to resources, which sometimes can be challenging in this pandemic year. Our, want to give a hats off to our technical writer, Gina Zaboni, who did an excellent job of piecing together the many written submissions from the work groups as they participated in preparing the document. So know that as we submit, as we prepared and submitted the year seven document, it was very thorough, extremely collaborative. And we had a minimum of 30 digital footprints, 30 authors helping to contribute materials to get this report together. But we put them into a single voice of Lane Community College. So this was a very excellent effort and at the close, we'll give a thank you to everybody who participated. Planning for the success of the visit. We have been preparing from our accreditation communications team. There are several accreditation videos. Some targeted to staff, some targeted to faculty. The next, I believe, will be targeted towards students. We have conducted town halls in the prior spring about the importance and the role of accreditation in our college. Again, there was the shared development and the. Again, there was the shared development and assembling the year seven report. Also, we received guidance and direction from our officer at New Q, Dr. Pam Goode, who graciously gave her time on many occasions as we had a Zoom nation, so to speak, the Zoom calls to make sure that what we were preparing were in alignment with the revised standards that we're following now that New Q put into play this year. As we move on towards the site visit, there are a few things that we will be doing to, as we get into the final six weeks or so. Continual notices in our lane weekly. The video presentations will be more forthcoming as new ones are released, but they will also be shouted out in the lane weekly. We'll also be doing some email blast. Training sessions to help folks be prepared for their role in the upcoming site visit. There'll be some for the board, some for faculty, some for management, some for staff, some for students to make sure that they're prepared for the, if they are selected for the site visit participation. The, as always, we have to provide public notice of the site visit. Brett and the marketing department has ensured us that that notice has gone out. We also are keeping it posted in the line weekly each week up into the visit. What has been shared by the commission that we are beginning to focus on is our enrollment management, which is for every college and university in the Pacific Northwest. The pandemic has had quite an impact on that. What they're looking for is how we are strategically dealing with the lower enrollments in some cases and what we are planning to do to possibly rebuild them. Also, how we're going to move past that and go into the post pandemic environment and working with the enrollments that will not only be online, but online and in hybrid, which means that you can also attend via live stream. They're also keenly interested in the disaggregated of our data, disaggregation of our data. They are looking for a culture of evidence. We have shared some of the business intelligence that we have already built. They are very excited about it and are keen to see how we begin to disseminate that in our fall term, which was our target. So that, that's a, that is something that they're looking at not only as counts of numbers, but cohorts. They're looking for cohorts, not only according to age, race, ethnicity, prior college, no college, a variety of inputs. We're doing very diligent work to make sure that we provide the college significant evidence of that. The student learning and assessment in the time of pandemic, they're going to be looking at how we have assessed student learning when much of it has been distanced. Ian Coronado and our provost, Paul Gerald, and our student affairs, ABP Mindy Do have helped us with not only the services that we've been providing students, but also with the learning environments that they provided for them and how we've been able to successfully assess that. And then finally, after everything, they want to know, okay, this is how we've survived the pandemic. We're going to get past this Delta variant. What's it look like for the future of Lane Community College, learning what we have learned? How are we providing self correction for our, our college and our community based on the experience we've had these last 24 months? And I'm trying to keep this down to 10 minutes so we can gain some traction on time. But I do want to give a great shout out to the accreditation communications team, the coordinating team leadership, the New Q leadership who tirelessly gave us their time, the many work groups and the writing team. If I have forgotten anybody, I apologize. So I will say everyone involved, thank you very much. And I'm going to stop sharing my screen. And for the overview of the accreditation process, I'm more than happy to answer any question that you may have.
Any questions, comments, thoughts from board members? Thank you, Richard. Rosie, go ahead.
I just want to compliment Marge and Richard and all of the people on staff who worked on this. This is my second go around in terms of accreditation preparation and site visits and so on. And this is really totally over the top well done. I just really want to compliment you. So thanks for doing such a great job.
Thank you for your confidence and thank you on the team's behalf.
Angela.
Thank you. I would like to echo Rosie's comments. This was clearly just so much work and the collaboration is really impressive. It's very difficult to maneuver an organization this large and bringing everybody together and getting all the pieces together. It's really impressive. It's a really impressive accomplishment. And I was wondering, of course, during it, what does this have to do with me? What do I do? And so I was very happy to hear that there will be training sessions for the board because I think I will really benefit from that. And I'm looking forward to having the training sessions. Will it all feel confident and prepared that I can represent the college if I should be elected to do so? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Angela. Marge.
A little commercial that next time we meet, we're going to give you part two of this presentation from Paul. And that's the focus on the year seven, which is teaching and learning. And he's going to talk a little bit about what our strengths were, you know, what did we learn from seven years ago? What the strengths are today, where our gaps are and how we're going to move forward. Because that's what assessment is. It's not that you're perfect when they come to visit us. It's that you know enough to know how to assess yourselves, know where your gaps are and you're working on them. And that's what it's all about. So you'll get that, what I call it, part two in two weeks.
Great. I don't see anyone else in the queue, but I, I do have a request, Richard. The links to the videos and some of those blast emails that you mentioned. Not all of the board gets the lane link. And we definitely don't necessarily get the bulk emails that go out to employees at the college. I would love if you could include the board on some of those links so we can see the materials that are being shared as well as some of the other information. I, even if you just give us a little update about some of that stuff, it would be really helpful.
I will make sure that that happens and I'll provide an update tomorrow on what we have sent and a schedule of where we're going and make sure that you're included. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you. Any final thoughts? I can, Holly, yeah.
Hi, I'm on a roll. I didn't see anything in the presentation and I'm hoping that President Hamilton will include this in the second part, but I'm just, I just want clarification about student success. So will we hear more about that? That's really important to me and I'm just curious, where does that fit or is it to be determined?
Marge, you want to address that?
That was perfect, Holly. That is part two. That is part two.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, Richard, I'll brag on Richard a little bit. Richard's so good at outcomes and disaggregated data. He has completely turned the college around and put us in the, in the right direction. Again, we may not be perfect, but we are at such a better place now with getting the data. So, so we'll see, we'll talk about that, student success in two weeks.
Thank you. And what an awesome report. Thank you.
Okay, great. I am going to move us on to board policies. So we've got some interesting ones that I, that are about us. So Michael Blade, you want to go ahead and get us moving on this?
Sure. Do we want to have any kind of a sort of, do you want me to describe this process for the two new board members a little bit, or do you just want to go right into it and they'll figure it out as we go?
We, we have talked about this in, in our onboarding. So I think we're, we're probably good to go.
All right. Can I've tried and tried and tried to share my screen, but it just doesn't work. I don't know if it's my computer or me. Brett or somebody, can you share the crosswalk?
Sure. Give me a moment here, Mike.
Well, and I'll, I'll start while he's pulling it up. So the first policy is the OCCA board policy 2715. I think this should be a fairly easy one since it tracks pretty much word for word with lane policy 313. The policy is around the code of ethics and standard practice for board members. Literally it's word for word. So I don't think there's a, unless you don't like the current, there we go. Unless you don't like the current policy, there's not a whole lot to dig into here. It's, it's just, it just maps perfectly.
And, and one thing you might clarify, Mike, is which one is the OCCA and which one is the LCC? I have a quick way to remember, but maybe.
Yeah, the OCCA is the, is the four digit one. So in this case, 2715. And the lane, all the current lane policies are three digits. This one is the one it would be replacing. And really, I mean, I don't know that it's really replacing it since they're exactly the same, but the one that would be replacing is board policy 313.
And Angela.
I think they're exactly the same because we already adopted this policy. We just numbered it the same thing as our LCC policy has been numbered. Do we need to re-adopt this policy or can we just re-number it since we already?
Well, it wasn't changed in our board. We'd already changed all the board policies. So I'd have to go back and look, but that would be, that was, that would be something that between Donna and I, we didn't catch. So if that's the case, that may be the, that may be the issue. So I will check on that and we'll see if, pardon me?
I don't think it's an issue. I think it's kind of a freebie. We adopted it in October 2019, recognizing that OCCA had a policy that we liked. And we just didn't change it because we weren't.
Well, if that's the case, then yeah, we wouldn't need to adopt it going forward. So that, that is a freebie for sure. Okay, and sorry.
Did you have something? Did you have something else on that or was that it? Okay, just seeing the hand. I, I did want to note that this policy ends by saying each member of the Board of Education will reaffirm adherence to the code of ethics by signing a statement at the annual organizational meeting. I have never participated in that activity and I'm not sure what this is referring to. And I'm not sure what the annual organizational meeting is. Is that our, is that one of our retreats? So I would just need clarification on this and.
July, that's the July meeting.
Okay.
Correct.
So we're talking about July, but I don't recall signing anything. Rosie, has this happened before?
Possibly in the distant past, but certainly not in recent memory.
Okay, so, so if this is our currently adopted policy, I would like for us to follow up on what we should be doing with for this piece. That's the only thing I would ask.
Truly noted. I will have that to you sometime before the next meeting.
Great. Maybe we could even take a look at it at our, our, our winter retreat. I don't know. So. Okay, so let's move on to the next one.
So we move on to 2716, which there is no current LCC policy that really is analogous to this one. This has to do with political activity. It really, it's, it relates to using college funds to, to push board or to push political agendas. I, I think that this board already knows this because I think for the bond, that was the reason we said it. We had the, the political action committee for the bond and we didn't, the Board of Education didn't do this. And so I don't think this is anything that should come as a surprise, at least to the board members that were around for the bond, you know, prior to the bond vote. So I don't think there's anything here that's terribly, probably terribly surprising to any members of the board, but that, that's basically what this is, this is saying. Now, I will say this, the Board of Education does have the ability to express a position on, on ballot measures as a board. And obviously each one of you as, as elected officials can express a position on pretty much anything individually, but just not as a, this, this is really more about the board as a, as a unit.
Great. Anybody have questions or comments about BP 2716? Angela.
Thank you. I think I have sort of a general comment about these three policies. In general, I am sort of not super in favor of having policies that sort of reiterate the law. For instance, I think I advocated very strongly against having the policy that prevented illegal gambling on campus because obviously we're not going to allow illegal things on campus. But for these ones, I think that they do offer some really helpful clarification about sort of a very potentially confusing part of the law and our responsibilities. So I think it's possible that we may want to change some of the wording on some of them, although I'm uncomfortable with them as they are. But I actually, I quite like all, all three of them. So my general comment, move my cat so I can go back on mute.
Thank you. Okay. Any other conversation on 2716? Rosie?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sort of picking up on something you said, Michael. In the past, members of this board who are no longer on this board had asserted that individuals on the board could not, for example, endorse a candidate for another office and have their name appear, for example, on that person's website, Rosie Pryor, Lane Community College Board Member. It could be Rosie Pryor, but it couldn't be Rosie Pryor Lane Community College Board Member. You just said that as an individual, I can do whatever is consistent with state statute, including I can endorse anything or anyone in my capacity as an individual member of this board.
Correct. So I, I had to do some of the, some research on this when I was at Klamath because we were, Klamath was one of the last counties to, or I guess it was the city actually, that was going to have a, the, it was the largest city, the last largest city to vote on the marijuana initiative to whether they were going to legalize marijuana. And KCC's board was hearing a lot of public comment both, on both sides. And they wanted to know exactly from me whether they could come down as a board saying, yes, it should be passed or no, it shouldn't. And we, so I did quite a lot of research actually, and yes, the board could express a, could come down on one side or the other as a board, but you all are publicly elected officials. So you have very little restriction on what you can do as a publicly elected official as far as having an opinion on almost anything. So all of those board members were able to go out in the community and say, you know, I, you know, John Smith, Klamath Community College Board Member, I'm against this initiative or I'm for this initiative. Would be the same thing if you were for or against a mayoral candidate or, or whatever. So yeah, you, what you can't do is make it seem like the board as a unit is for it. So you can't speak for the board, but you certainly can speak as a publicly elected official on your individual, as an individual.
I appreciate that clarification. Thanks.
So any, any other comments or questions about board policy 2716? Feeling like we can move it forward to the consent agenda? So if there's not a lot of conversation or discussion about it, so let's go ahead and move on to 2717.
2717 is, is about personal use of public resources by board members. And this is, this is, you know, I think Angela hit it right on the head. This is, it's not drawn perfectly from the ORS statute, but it's, but it's pretty close. Basically says that you, you can't use your, your official position to obtain financial gain or avoid some sort of financial detriment for your, for yourself or a family member and that type of thing. And then it does give you, what is it about? Five, six, seven, about eight exceptions to the prohibition. And so I. Five, six, seven, about eight exceptions to the prohibition. And so I I would just. Whether we adopt this particular board policy or not, I would encourage all of you to look very carefully at this, just to make sure none of you get caught up in it. Understand what the exceptions are and 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 what, you know, when they apply. I would also encourage us to include this board policy, but it this is really. One that's very closely aligned with the with the ORS.
And and I will say that I agree with Angela. I'm not a big fan of like reiterating. ORS and the policy, but I do think that these policies provide some good clarification. And they are things that we should be very aware of and were things that we attempted to cover. In our onboarding of new board members. So Austin.
And I know with this policy and kind of the language around a policy like this. Public employees, we have several board members that work as some public employees. So we wrote on something like. University of Oregon, for instance, that like a joint thing that. We would work with as an institution. That's not necessarily considered like a benefit or something that. Benefits us personally as a board because we work or as a board member because we work for that institution, correct?
Correct. You that would not be. So if, you know, if we were doing some kind of joint thing with the University of Oregon. Steve, if 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 I were in that position, I would probably bring that up and make it make a point of saying, you know, I just want everybody to understand that I. Am employed by the University of Oregon, you know, and so that everybody understands for the record why you. Why you're saying that, but that would not be he would be fully able to vote or, you know, yes or no on anything like that. It has to be for you personally or a member of your family or something like, you know, so if we were voting on a. On granting a, you know, five hundred thousand dollar construction contract and it was your brother's company, that would be a totally different thing.
Yes, exactly. By the way, didn't you need to single out Steve? I work for the Oregon Employee Department, so.
No, no. Steve was the only one I knew did that. So that's sorry.
Okay, so if there are no questions or comments on board policy twenty seven seventeen, I think. We'll be able to move that forward to the consent agenda at our board meeting. Remember, everybody, anybody can always pull something from the consent agenda. So let's take a look at board policy twenty seven twenty.
So twenty seven twenty is really about how you all make decisions, how you can and can't make decisions. I I believe this, somebody told me a story, and this was before I was in Oregon. I was still in Tennessee at the time. And I don't know if it was on on what board this gentleman was was sitting, but apparently there was a board member for some board in Oregon. Who was going around each board member and and making decisions in in twosomes. And and having the decision made that way. And so I think this board policy and and the state law that it's tied to. Are are likely a result of that. So, you know, Lisa can't go to Rosie and say, okay, you agree to this. Yep. Okay. Now now separately, I'm going to go to Austin and say, do you agree with this? Yep. And make decisions without. The deliberation of the full board with a quorum. So this really has to do with how you're going to make decisions, what you can and can't do.
Any comments, questions?
Many county politicians have been living in fear of this for a good twenty years. So, yeah, those of us who've been here a long time. And read the read the paper regularly. Yeah, know how to act accordingly.
All right, seeing no hands. We'll move this one forward to the consent agenda. So this you might have a. This might be your record time, Mike.
Right. Well, there was ten left in the board in the board section. And so I was going to do five and five, and I realized we'd already approved one of those. So it came down to four. And now it seems like we missed one. So we actually approved two. I probably would have included more, but. It's a nice, you know, dipping the toe for the new members, right?
I think this was a good start to our fall after taking a break. So thank you. All right, so I'm going to move us on to our last agenda item. So we have. An update and then discussion. About. Covid nineteen at Delta variant and how we are continuing to keep our campus. Safe as a teaching and learning community. And let me see who we've got. Provost Paul Gerald, who's gonna give us an update. And it looks like we also have Laura Green, our Health Clinic Director, and Shane Turner, our Chief Human Resources Officer, who will be supporting the update.
Yeah, we have a thank you Chair Fragile. We have kind of a tag team approach today to make sure we cover all items that that might be of interest to you. Laura Green, our Student Health Clinic Director is logging on right now, so she'll be here in a minute. I'm going to present some of the aspects from the student side of our approach, and I'll let Shane kind of comment on more things that might be more employee related. That I might not not hit on or have, you know, ready information for that you may want to know. So what I thought I would do is give you kind of a verbal update. I'll make sure that I've got some statistics we just just pulled on Monday that we didn't have in time to put in the packet. I'll make sure that you get all of these as a follow up and they will be in the minutes for the meeting. If we look at enrollments at large across campus, our credit enrollment right now for fall term is down ten percent. In enrollments. If we look at where we fare relative to other colleges, most colleges are still experiencing. Ten to fifteen percent drops in enrollment. I think the largest institution in the state Portland. Community College, they're down about ten percent. Mount Hood, who's about our size, is down fifteen percent. So we are all still feeling the impacts of the pandemic. If we look at where we find those drops, they're in those areas where we historically have had. A significant amount of hands on in-person learning for us. That's in our CTE areas. And mathematics continues to to show double-digit drops. And interestingly enough, we're seeing decline in areas that. Really are a barometer of overall student course-taking behaviors. For example, in the social sciences, we are. Down significantly in social sciences as well, which is kind of like a good barometer of of what's the general kind of feeling for students. And since most all students take some social science courses, at least our transfer side. So so we're still seeing those drops. We are seeing drops also in retention of students. If you look at our student populations that are registering, the largest drop that we see in registration is with continuing students. So these are students that were enrolled in the spring that are no longer enrolled in the fall. And so I think what we're seeing there is again, some some, you know, continuing pandemic uncertainty about education. And looking at, you know, students looking at, you know, not having optimal conditions or at least conditions that they. Sort of expected or anticipated to be learning in and are struggling with decisions about, do I continue? Or do I try to wait this out and come back when maybe conditions are a little bit better for their learning? We see that in new students too, right? Our new student typically were down about ten percent from where we should be with new student registrations. And and we knew that was going to probably happen. Financial aid applications across the country and and the state have been down. So again, this kind of. Putting a pause on education seems to be continuing. The the fear, of course, we have with our student body is that we know the longer they wait to start their education or continue or stop out, the less likely they are to come back. So that's a real fear and we're really working to try to engage those students. And as Richard mentioned in his report. That's a real focus that our accrediting agencies are now looking at across the board is like, how are institutions going to do with this type, deal with this type of behavior there? So so we're down, right? And but again, we're not unique in being down. If we look at where we took courses, we made a concerted effort in spring to try to move more courses in person. Or at least have some component of in-person learning so that students could could have that experience. We weren't anticipating the impacts of the Delta variant, obviously, and we're having to to do some course redirect because of that. But if we look at where right now, as of today, where students are taking courses, what modality are they comfortable taking courses in? Most of our enrollments, now, these are not students because students might have multiple enrollments, one online, one in person, whatever. But if we just look at enrollments, sixty percent of our enrollments are in fully remote sections still. Either fully online asynchronous or maybe a hybrid with a Zoom session with their faculty members. But they're not those enrollments don't have any in-person component to them. About twenty percent of our enrollments are have some in-person component to them. And about twenty percent of our enrollments are in fully in-person classes. Now that typically would be, you know, classes where you might think of what pre-pandemic, most of our courses were, right? Your Monday, Wednesday, Friday, twelve to two, and that's where your classes are. We've recognized with certainly the rise of the Delta variant and the prolonged peak that it looks like we're going to have in dealing with. Not only infections, but also hospitalizations. That we need to do a little bit of course correction here in terms of how we're offering our courses and services to students. Shane might comment a little bit more on this more fully, but just yesterday, I sent out a message to all of our faculty. That if we had faculty that were scheduled and at under one set of conditions pre-Delta variant. Had elected to teach in person, we wanted to provide an ability to kind of rethink that. And we have options both for formal ADA accommodations, of course. But we also have options for non-ADA accommodation requests. These would be individuals that they themselves might be medically fragile or living with someone who's medically fragile. They might have young children at home that can't be vaccinated, so they have concerns about potentially raising the risk for those. And just in general, individuals that have concerns about. Considering the state of affairs currently in Oregon and Lane County, just concerns about being in routine in-person settings. And we provide wanted to provide the option for employees to be able to request. To have where possible, any in-person teaching or work. Move to remote setting if possible, right? We still will have because we are not going fully remote. We still will have the need for in-person instruction in a lot of these hands-on areas. What we're just trying to minimize the amount of that to try to ease some fears that that folks have with returning under under these new conditions that we've got. We have scaled back. Our plans for in-person support for students. We still have and always have, will have. Moving forward, a lot of virtual support, but we're focusing on really trying to have services available for students that are at predictable times. In person for our for those folks that do come to campus, the students that do come to campus, we're looking at Mondays and Thursdays as days when we will have some open hours where possible. Now, I will say that. We will evaluate all of this as the the term progresses, right? And if there's anything we've learned over the past eighteen months, what I tell you today could change by the time I wake up in the morning. I don't, I I think there were a few times last spring where I sent out one email on a Monday and I sent out a different one on a Tuesday because. We just do the best we can to keep up with this. I'm proud the fact that we've really tried to stay ahead of this. And we really have been out in front of any kind of mandates that have come from the state. And in in protecting our campus and and our students and and our our employees. So I feel really good about that. I wanted to provide a little brief and and I'll I'll make sure you get all those numbers. My apologies for not having this in advance. I think this was added at a late late time. The if we look at where we are with implementation, I wanted to give just a brief look into this. And again. What I tell you today is going to change because on the horizon, we anticipate some some word coming from the governor's office. With regard to implementation of of mandates in higher education and they will be likely different than we implemented. So we're going to have to do a version two point oh anyhow. So it's a good time to think about if there are course corrections we need to do in our implementation process. This is a good time to think about it because we're going to have to have have that happen anyhow. We had a verification form for vaccination for students and employees that went live on August sixteenth. And I do want to just recall that I think it was about three weeks before that to the to the date, maybe a little bit less even that we had the the the. Action from the board to do this. So I really do want to comment and and commend our. IT staff and Student Affairs staff in particular, and Deborah Butler in particular, Don Barth, Laura Green. Really working at trying to get some of this implemented as quickly as we can. We've learned a lot by doing it. There are things, obviously hindsight's twenty twenty that we would do differently and and we anticipate a version two point oh incorporating some of that. We have had, from the standpoint of student submission so far, we have had over sixteen hundred form submissions from students. It's interesting. Every time we send out a nudge reminder, we get a bulk of of them in the next day. So we're going to get get more routine about communicating things out. Of those sixteen hundred, a little plus more than sixteen hundred form submissions that we've had. Over thirteen hundred of them, those students are fully vaccinated, thirteen hundred students are fully vaccinated, about twenty students are in the process. They've had one shot and are in the process of completing them. So we've had eighty one percent of the folks that have returned the form. Returned the form showing they're either fully vaccinated or in the process of being fully vaccinated and will certainly be by the time school starts. So so I feel good about that number as well. It's interesting the way we had to implement this with the timeline. We have asked all students to fill out the form, whether they are having any in-person instruction or not. And we did that to to really allow them to, one, to gauge what is our community vaccination rates. And we also did that to to a gauge to allow them to be. Able to participate in the vaccination lottery. And and we felt that this was a way to 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 get both of those in in one kind of setting. We realized that from a a compliance issue, the folks, the students that really are not compliant. Everybody's compliant at this point because the forms are the submission deadline is September twenty fourth. But we know that from a compliance point of view, we're really only looking at a handful of students. And again, remember, we only have about forty percent of enrollments. I don't know how many students that is, but enrollments that are in person. Those are the students that we're going to be looking to see. Are they compliant? Have they filled out this form? What's the vaccination rate among those students that are going to be on campus? And also, given the fact that we've provided the ability to move courses that had been scheduled in person. Some of them at least to remote offerings, we know that that pool of potential students that are going to be on campus is smaller. Again, making those that are left on campus essential workers and people that have to be on campus safer because we just have a fewer fewer folks on campus. There. When we look at this, we did realize we have had some concerns about managing this with. Certain populations of students that either don't have tech technology literacy. Or maybe struggle with English as a language. My apologies for my puppy. He's been quiet for two hours, but of course it always happens. We know we have folks that are that we're trying to address in our ESL program, our Continuing Education Program, our Adult Basic Skills Program. Where we're having to provide a little bit more hands-on support for filling out forms and we're working on that. We're looking at as far as when we hit September twenty fifth, when some students will be non-compliant. We're looking at how do we treat those students? You know, we have a mission of access. We really want to avoid dropping students. We want to really provide carrots to get students in here. Because there are, that's the solution, right, is to try to get students vaccinated in particular is what we're really trying to do. So we're looking at various kinds of holds that we can put on students' accounts. Holds that are just as simple as anytime they try to do something, they get a nudge or a reminder that they're not compliant. But at some point, we'll put hardholds on students' accounts that will require them to fill out the form before they can make any changes. And before they can access grades, transcripts, or anything like that. So that will come again. What we're trying to avoid are those draconian punitive damages that would. You know, put a student back into that situation that they're trying to get out of by being here. So we're really trying to problem solve around that one.
Oh, I'm just curious how much more you have because you're covering a lot of territory and I'm wondering when we might.
Sure.
Stop and ask what kinds of questions and comments board members have.
One one more minute and then we'll segue into to these other folks, I'm sure. I just wanted to tell you what we're doing for vaccine access for our students. Our health clinic has held over thirty vaccination clinics so far. This is run by our health clinic staff. So kudos to Laura and her team. This is run by our health clinic staff, so kudos to Laura and her team. We do offer appointment for vaccinations on Wednesdays, and we'll continue to do that. We are having a clinic at the downtown, the Spili Downtown Center the week prior to the start of the term. We're going to have walk-up clinics available the first of the, the first week of the term. We also have incentives, lottery incentives for students that are vaccinated, again, to incentivize that particular there. So that's my part of it. If I haven't covered something that you would like to hear about, I know Laura can talk a little bit about the status of the Delta variant in Lane County, perhaps. And I don't know if Shane, if I didn't cover anything specifically regarding employees that the, the board might want to hear about as well.
Um, I'm just trying to evaluate if we should stop and take questions and comments after each person. Marge, do you have any feedback about that? Should we get it, get it all out and then go loop about? I mean, I don't have a sense of what everyone else is going to report on.
Probably a good idea, only because the other two are going to be very brief, and then you can put all your questions together.
Okay, thank you for that feedback. Okay, so let's go ahead and go to Laura first, and then Shane, we'll let you wrap up. Thank you.
All right, good evening, everybody. My name's Laura Green, I'm the director of the health clinic. And yes, I should be pretty brief. As you probably realize, the Delta variant has been extremely impactful on Lane County and Oregon as a whole, the United States as well, but our region especially. I think included in your documents is a simple graphic. It's called the Epi-curve. Maybe that can be shared by Deborah.
Thank you.
Um, you may have seen something like this before. It's a simple way of looking at COVID-19 cases in Lane County over time since the beginning of the pandemic. And you can see the latest, I don't have the ability to use my cursor to show you, so you can just follow along. But you can see the latest surge there, starting about six weeks ago, is by far the greatest surge that we've had in Lane County, far surpassing the winter surge that happened previously, which most people thought would have been our greatest peak that we would have had. So that's, that's it for that infographic. I think it's pretty telling. Just kind of in some numbers, another way to think about that is prior to this surge, one way that they talk about the burden of community transmission is the number of infectious cases at a given point in time. Prior to this surge, that number had never been over 1,000. And during this surge, pretty recently, there was a period of time where for more than 10 days straight, that number exceeded 1,000. So you also may have heard that the hospitals here are full. The National Guard has been called in to help staff Riverbend Hospital. There's no more PACU at Riverbend Hospital, because that needed to be turned into an ICU. So that is the current state of affairs in Lane County. In terms of, this is just, maybe just interesting to me, but interesting, I guess, with regards to at least some of our students. In terms of the demographics of the recent surge, the people being affected the most, in terms of number of cases, are between the ages of 20 and 39. That by far represents the most cases. And we know that the most people being hospitalized, the most people dying, and the most people becoming infected are the unvaccinated, although there are some breakthrough cases, people also being affected. Oregon as a whole is also struggling. The OHA's weekly report came out today. People may or may not have seen that. And for the eighth consecutive week, both cases and hospitalizations are increasing in Oregon. In terms of kind of what happens next, of course, we don't really know, but I did speak with a senior public health official today in Lane County, and it does look like there's some early signs that, at least in Lane County, if not really in Oregon as a whole, but in Lane County, that it's beginning to plateau. And it's very, at the very, very beginning of the plateau, so that's not for sure. It might still go up again. But the hope is that that's true, beginning to plateau. And the thought is, if that's true, and that holds, that by the end of September or early October, cases might start to decrease. So that is the current state of affairs of Delta and COVID in Oregon.
Thank you, Laura. Shane?
Good evening. So Paul covered most of the, the high points in terms of employees. It's notable that today was supposed to be the day that we provided in-person services during all business hours on campus. That was what we were planning for, and it would have still meant, you know, staggered staffing, and, and not necessarily every single employee on campus, but all of that changed with the guidance from Lane County Public Health last week. And so in addition to the accommodations that Paul talked about, the other, the other thing that we've asked managers to do is to assess the work in their departments and, and only assign for in-person services what we need to be able to meet the needs of the students that'll be on campus, anticipating a reduced footprint and anticipating the need for those departments that serve other employees rather than students, that, that they will have a diminished need as well. And so the folks requesting these accommodations may well be taken care of in a remote situation, just based upon the way that the managers are, are reducing in-person work planning. The, the other thing we're working with, we're trying to accommodate employees working in both directions. So we have employees who want to work from home or continue to work from home. We also have employees who want to work on campus and want to be able to do so if possible. And so we're looking at ways that we can accommodate that safely. Obviously, some staff, essential staff have to be on campus, some of those academic programs that Paul mentioned, but also public safety facilities have to be on campus as well as they have been during the entire pandemic. And so continuing to, to make sure those folks stay safe as well. Essentially, all of the protections that we had in place during the reopening plan are, are still in place, right? We are, are requiring masking outdoors as well as indoors. We're requiring social distancing. We have hand wash stations and cleaning supplies available to, to employees signage. And so all of the things we've been doing to keep people safe, we're continuing to do. We're just not able to come back in full force as soon as, as we would have liked because of, of Delta. Our deadline for employees to submit their vaccine information is a little earlier than students. We've set September 14th as that date. We don't know if there'll be a different deadline associated with the governor's mandate, and so waiting to hear, hear from her and, and how that, that may change. With that, I, I welcome any questions you may have for me or, or the other folks on this item.
Hey, thank you for that very sobering update. And I, I, I do want to open up the conversation, and I do also want to just remind us all that there's, there's a lot of fear and worry out there in the, you know, community that we are part of, that we are elected by, that we represent. And I, I want us to take all of that into consideration. And as well as the level of effort that it has required for everybody to be moving forward into a third year of this after, you know, we all thought we would be meeting in person at this meeting. So I just want to recognize the emotional toll that this is taking on everybody. And I know that everybody here is really committed to having a safe teaching and learning community here at LCC. So I'm going to turn it over to Austin, followed by Holly.
Thank you. I just want to repeat the, that sentiment. And, and yeah, this is, uh, this is a hard time for a lot of people. So I just wanted to recognize that as well. A question I had, so obviously, we have objectives such as to have a, as high of a vaccinated student population and employee population as possible, prevention of community spread and so forth. And Laura, I don't know if you can maybe answer this question. We also kind of have a responsibility as an institution within our community to make sure that we create as much safety as possible for our students and employees, so that accidents don't happen and they go to the hospital, because that's a big part of the issue here, is that, you know, with a high number of people taking up ICUs, other like emergency type of situations are not possible for them. So doing things like reducing, like for our land, our, our groundskeeper, people that are doing general labor work, maybe not have them do things that could possibly cause them to have an accident that causes them to go to the hospital, reduce those risks. Or if we have employees that have to travel long distances, having them telework rather than driving long distances, because that can increase the cost for accidents. So should we also, as a part of our community, be considering those things, as well as the things we've been doing during this pandemic, which is to reduce community spread, increase vaccine, our vaccine rate within our population and so forth? Is, are those, like, am I thinking of the right things here? I, um, not only just the macro, but the micro?
Laura?
Um, sure, I, I think that's a really good thing to think about. I think about that, I guess, most especially for individuals to think about the ways that they can reduce, or the ways they can think about the activities that they're doing to ensure that they're being as safe as possible. I know that our custodial services and facilities services already have like impeccable safety records. So if, if I knew that they didn't, I would think that that would be an excellent place to start. But I just happen to know that they have, I don't remember the days and counting that they have accident-free, but it's, it's very long already. So I think those programs on campus already have a lot of safety measures in place and are extremely safety-conscious, which is excellent at all times of the year, not even during a pandemic, which is super great. But, you know, perhaps in the messaging, it could be a good, I know Lane County in general has done a good job in their community messaging of reminding people to please be safety-conscious in their own lives, to reduce the risk of injury. And so perhaps in our messaging, we could kind of reiterate that. I don't know institutionally, I can't off the top of my head think of kind of institutional places that I think that were kind of taking unnecessary risks or that I can think of that are particularly risky right now. But if somebody else kind of knew of an area that seemed risky, they could take a look at that.
Thank you. Holly?
Thank you for that. I'm so happy that I was part of the approval for return to campus safety unanimous decision on our board to pass the vaccination policy. So I, I'm super impressed. Thank you for such a thorough report, that you guys are up to date. And it's like September 1st, and you already have stats. So kudos to, to your team for that. My question is probably for Laura, or maybe even President Hamilton. Are we prepared for the folks who are so comfortable with studying at home and feel like they got it, you know, they're under control? They, they got it there. They've been in hybrid mode or online for so long. Are we prepared for that? You know, they don't want to come back, because they feel like they can, they can do it online. And then my other response is, Laura, I know you have your hands full right now. So thank you so much for, for working diligently to make sure that our campus is safe, the social and emotional. Do we have something in place for those folks? Paul, you mentioned that there are those who drop out and chances are, or stats show, or data shows that they probably, you know, won't return. What are we doing to increase our outreach? And I understand that a lot of folks are not responding to, you know, summer, you know, they're in summer mode, and a lot of people don't even check their emails in summer. What are we doing to combat the outreach that we are doing for those folks to, to get them back in and on campus and say? Still have questions?
Yeah, I, shall I answer?
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, I'll, 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 I'll try to address a couple of those, those points. We, we, we do have, so for the students that have found themselves, you know, fond of staying at home and, and learning at home, and, and I, I assume are, are, are doing that effectively. I mean, we do have, and will continue to have even post-pandemic, probably a larger online offering than we had before. We had one of the largest in the States already. So, so I think that, that we, we, we were prepared before the pandemic, and we'll continue to try to serve those students who actually want to learn remotely. And so I think we'll see our portfolio increase in that regard. I think we'll also see an, an increase in instruction that allows students to learn in either mode, either in-person or, or remote, depending upon the situation at the time. There's some technology fixes that have to occur with that as well. We also have, for the students that need the additional support, I mean, we do have and have devoted more resources to counseling in our Mental Health and Wellness Center licensed clinicians to, to really support some of those needs that are there. And we have increased the amount of tutoring services and outreach that we have for students that are enrolled in, in both a virtual and an in-person setting. So that's that piece. The students that are stopping out, I mean, we are aggressively reaching out to those students, both at the program level for students that haven't completed, and institutionally for students that we know haven't returned. So, so we're working at trying to, to attract and, and, and get them to come back. We also have some incentive from some of our relief funds, COVID funds, to, to try to get students to come back, kickstart grants and, and the like, to try to get students and to incentivize them to stay in school and to return to school.
Awesome, and do we have a texting campaign going on?
We do, as a matter of fact. We, one of the, the, the technologies that we just purchased last year, we have now up and running and the ability to text mass tech students. So thank you for that.
Hey, Mike, and then I have myself in the queue.
I'd just like to commend the staff and the faculty on how nimble you have been, once again. You've already been nimble multiple times during the pandemic, but once again, responding so quickly to this ever-changing COVID roller coaster and, and the thoroughness of, of your work. So I, I just wanted to commend and thank you for that.
Okay. So in, in listening to Laura's report, and I am looking at this Epi-curve in front of me, we, we're looking at nearly double the, the positivity cases that we were at the highest point during the, during stage two of the pandemic. And, you know, I'm listening to the fact that the National Guard has come in to staff our hospital. And so I, I absolutely agree that enrollment is important. But I, I also would like to hear about what are the things that we are doing to keep our employees and our students safe? And we know And we know a lot about the virus at this point. We know it's vaccinations. We know it's masking. We know it's social distancing. And in many cases for large institutions, it's ventilation. So this board unanimously passed a vaccination requirement. And I would, and when we had that conversation, we discussed the fact that there would be verification of if students were vaccinated. So I'd like to know, how are we verifying that students are vaccinated? How are we verifying that employees are vaccinated? I'd also like to know, in our conversation about the vaccination requirement, we talked about, I looked back at my notes and I could go back and watch the meeting, but the only students that were vaccinated, who had verified vaccination would be on campus. And so Paul, I appreciate the fact that we are decreasing the number of students previously, you know, a month ago, you said it would be 50%. That was, you know, would be on campus. Now I'm hearing 40%. But 20% fully in person. I think that's a good trend, but how many of those students are unvaccinated? That's the, in my opinion, that's a risk and I think we need to get a handle on it. And then this board passed a vaccination requirement that had language that was implementing the state law. And it is, I believe, come to our attention that the personal waiver is not included in the state law. And perhaps Michael Blade could verify that for us. So I'm really interested in hearing what are we doing to keep this teaching and learning community safe? I know it's not going to be a snap of the finger and it's going to happen, but I want to know how we're going to get there with the things we know we can do. Vaccinations, masking, social distancing, ventilation, and how are we implementing the vaccination requirement? And, and then at some point, I'd like to have a conversation with the board about whether or not we need to re-implement the safe reopening plan because we're way beyond where we were when we had that plan in place. And I feel like we know how to keep this community safe. We have a plan. We know how to do it. Do we still need that plan? Marge?
Yeah. So let me give you an overview. It's been three weeks since, you know, since the board did the right thing and voted this and we all, you all worked real hard to get it there. What we didn't know in full transparency is what the operational detail of this really meant. Our university partners were at this for months. They already had systems in play. And when we took it back, honestly, this was, this was like getting to ground zero. Folks had to scramble, build things in our IT systems. And at the time, the operations team weighing all the information felt like they made their best decisions to just gather the information first. And, you know, I've read all the letters you have. Everybody makes a good point, period. But we did not have the capacity to get it done at that time that fast. Richard could speak to this, but I think what we found out is there's companies that could help you do this. Richard, could you jump in? Because this is really one of the number one pain points that folks want to know, how are you validating?
Yes, ma'am. Our Tableau dashboard system is built away where we're monitoring the students that fill out the vaccination request that we have today. To follow up on the, on the second generation of that, we're looking at how the cards can be uploaded. We're encouraging this because they're already in the system. The long-term solution that we began looking at with our programmers today was there are third parties such as Qualtrics, who we already have a contract with for surveying material. I believe it was Mount Hood here in Oregon, just signed a contract with them. It's based on your cell phone. So within three weeks, here's what we've been able to accomplish to provide assurances. One, we built a system for the reporting. Two, that system allows a student and staff member to fill out their vaccination status. We can record it against the enrollments that we have and the employees that we have. The next step is to get the vaccine cards loaded up, which we are looking at how that can be accomplished with the equipment that we have. So from day one, when it was implemented from the board to today, we have had, we've made significant progress to learn and know what we know. And it has helped us learn more about what we didn't know. So we are moving quickly and swiftly. Our next sprint starts Monday on the next iteration of this. So we, I'm open to any questions you have about that, ma'am.
Yeah, I, I think the message here is we hear everybody and it's not that we disagreed. I mean, I heard we, we, you, I've read you a lot. And I've written to you many times. People talk to us about HIPAA, about this, about that. But at the end of the day, quite frankly, we didn't know how to do it. We were trying to do it with the resources we had. But I think Richard has gotten a lot of information. We, we were able to at least collect the self-reporting and 2.0, as we're starting to call it, will be to get the validation. Now, the other thing is tomorrow is our state meeting. Tomorrow is where the OPC is going to be meeting with people from the governor's office. And we're, we believe we're going to hear, I think it could be a full mandate, but I also think we're going to hear information on the religious exemptions. You also, I know, heard lots about philosophical slash personal exemptions. So that interpretation, we believe we're going to hear tomorrow, will be tightened up by the governor. And again, I can defer to Mike now, but we had no working definition. And, and we are, I hope, we are hopeful that we get one from the governor's office for higher ed. Mike, can you address that?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I don't, I'm not sure what we're going to get from the governor. I can tell you what we did as far as the, the exemptions go. We followed our university partners, University of Oregon and Oregon State, and frankly, every other higher ed institution in the state, except for Pacific University, allows for the philosophical exemption.
So we Oh, but can you explain what the state law says?
The state law does not require you to have the philosophical exemption.
You're kind of breaking up a little bit, Mike. Could you repeat that?
Yeah, the state law does not require you to include the philosophical exemption. It, you can include it, but it is not required.
Okay, thank you.
But again, we, what we did is we tried to pattern it around the large institutions that had gone before us with a, with a vaccine mandate. And, and I believe that, that's why we included the philosophical exemption.
Steve?
Just a couple of comments. So speaking, I suppose for myself, when I read about the philosophical exemption, and I, I heard what Mike said, following the lead of other institutions, including the one I work for, that one just frankly, just doesn't pass the sniff test for me. It's just so, and I'm sure people might have similar objections and at the same time, you know, worry about how do you manage all of this if you were to try and tighten down. But I'm just voicing my particular opinion. That one just doesn't pass the sniff test. It just seems to, it seems to make a mockery of the, of the system we have in place. You know, it creates such a loophole as to make a mockery of the whole thing. And so that's, that's just an observation and there's not much to do about it other than to, at least maybe in the short term, other than just to simply at least put it out there. And then, and then a, a question. So, and perhaps this is for you, Mike. Our system is basically in an honor-based system, at least as I understand it. Do we include some kind of language that says, you know, should you be found? Yeah, I don't know, have all the wording, the proper wording, but should we discover at a later point that you misrepresented your vaccine status? That there are penalties that the institution could take against employees and students alike. And regardless of whether we know what those would be, or how would we put those into effect, that we would put people on notice upfront that that's an option, we may take advantage of at a later date.
I would say that the answer to that last question is yes. What those penalties would be, that's, we're currently negotiating with both unions around, you know, sort of a COVID safety MOA and, and that particular question has come up. And I think the, the last I heard, the EF president wanted to go back and talk to her executive council. EA has been quite evasive on what disciplinary actions the faculty would face if they were found to either have lied or not been vaccinated. As far as students go, there's, there's student conduct. Again, that's a, that's a, you know, there's due process issues and it's usually a, a, a you know, continual discipline thing where you start kind of low and move up. Obviously, we could start, you know, with, with some sort of suspension or, I mean, we could do, I'm not going to say we can do anything we want, but I think various institutions are doing different things. I know Duke University has said to their employees, if you are not vaccinated or provide a reasonable exemption by a certain date, you're terminated. So that would be the, the most draconian that you could, you could do. And you could do something, you know, we could start progressive discipline with employees as well with a simple reminder, followed by a, you know, written warning, followed by suspension. That would be our typical sort of progressive discipline that would, that would occur. But that's going to, that's going to require unions, the unions to sign on to that. The biggest problem with disciplining employees is you get grievances either way, right? You discipline them too harshly, you get grievances from the union for the, for the harsh discipline. If you don't discipline them, then are we going to get grievances from the union that we're not providing discipline? And, and it's unsafe. So we're in a tough spot here without union agreement.
So Mike, I'm just going to point out that I think your headset may have a, a weak link and you keep cutting in and out. So.
I was able to follow.
I was able to follow too, but I just wanted to let you know. So thank you for that. Austin?
So, um, students and employees are uploading essentially their vaccine card and and, and are they filling out a form? Are they filling out an acknowledgement? Are they, yep, okay, I'm seeing some head shakes. Yes?
Clarification on that, please?
Yeah.
Students and employees, either when they access the form, what they are entering, they're not uploading the ID cards, the, the vaccination cards. They are entering the dates at which they got the vaccinations. And if they're not vaccinated, they're claiming a particular type of exemption and either medical, religious or personal. And if they claim an exemption, they have to watch an educational video and attest that they understand that before they submit the exemption.
Okay. And is the main reason we are not uploading vaccine cards is because we see in the news, obviously about fake cards and stuff like that. Is that the primary reason? Or is there a software issue?
I think that's a reason. We discussed the validity and what proof that provided over an attestation with the dates and there didn't seem to be in conversation a lot of faith in uploading a card. We also were worried about some of our students' technology capabilities of being able to upload a card. We also didn't want the vaccination affirmation process to be more challenging in any way than the exemption. We didn't want them to go straight to the exemption because it was the easier thing for them to just do. So it was complicated. And I think the other thing to realize is that, you know, we are an institution that prior to about three weeks ago required no vaccinations or proof of vaccinations or medical record submissions by our students. So we were starting really from ground zero in trying to get a process in place that would allow us to implement this in the way we, we thought the board directive was.
Totally. Just one more question about the pieces of information. So obviously the date, are you asking for, I believe it's called the lot number. I might be wrong on this, but on your vaccination card, you got a lot number and the clinic in which you got the shot in. Are we asking for that too? Or?
No, we are not. We discussed asking for the lot number, but we thought verifying that and, and looking at it and, and, you know, people's ease of being able to, to translate that from their card might be a little bit more challenging. With the date, they can, can access a calendar to input the date as opposed to having to write it in any particular fashion.
Rosie?
So the start place for me with respect to this conversation is the, the thought that I consistently have that I'm grateful I don't have school age children because I would not be sending them to school. K through 12, higher education. I, I just wouldn't be, I don't, I don't feel like it's like this country has grappled with this pandemic. I personally feel like what we're experiencing is the tyranny of the minority who are determined to behave in a fashion that is putting millions of the rest of us at risk and prolonging an experience that has completely disrupted life. I was, I was really appreciative of Lisa's request for clarification by administration about what exactly in great specificity, we are doing to keep employees safe and to keep students safe because that's what's driving that drop in enrollment. It isn't so much financial, although remember, I'm the biggest critic of tuition increases, but it's the fact that people don't feel safe or, or, or don't have the ability to do the online thing. But safety is where it's at today. And so I, I, I think this board absolutely needs to revisit the safe reopening plan at some point. I don't think we're reopening. I mean, what I'm hearing administration say is we're trying to keep this as conservative in terms of face-to-face interactions between employees and students as we possibly can because we just don't have the ability to guarantee anyone's safety. So I, I personally hope that my colleagues on the board will approach this from the standpoint that our fundamental, our fundamental responsibility at this point in this aberrant time in history is to keep people safe. It, it is. It, it just is. And I'm, I'm sincerely regretful that we can't fulfill our mission to students very well right now, if, if really at all. But the, but the issue is we need to keep Lane from as much fiscal harm as we can in this period, but we've got to keep people safe. And if that means we don't require faculty to present on campus and teach face-to-face, if that means we can't offer trainings that require hands-on, face-to-face learning because we can't guarantee people's safety, then that's what we have to consider. But I guess I would also just like to reassure President Hamilton that I am fully supportive of what you are doing. And, and like Mike said, I really, really appreciate how nimble you are trying to be and how hard you are working to try to, to make the college function under the circumstances. I, I'm reminded that both of our unions lobbied us intensively to require this vaccine mandate. And I don't think if we're not required to offer a certain type of exemption, we shouldn't be offering it. We should expect people, if they want to come to the Lane learning community right now, they need to be vaccinated. Otherwise, they need to stay home. They need to keep themselves safe and they need to let us keep our learning community members safe. So I, I just wanted to, to say that's, that's how I'm looking at this situation. I'm grateful. I don't have to make the decision about what to do with school-aged children because I don't think schools can keep children or young adults safe, let alone their own employees. Thanks.
Thank you, Rosie. Holly?
Rosie, you make a really good point and thank you for recognizing those of us who do have school-aged children. And I think you're saying some things that a lot of people are almost avoiding. It, it, it's a valid, um, concern. And we all know with the Delta that there could be more. I mean, for all we know, there are more out there right now that have not been named the variants. But I, I, I really think that that's a conversation and, and my question is, are we prepared for that? And do we have a, not prepared, I mean, we can never really be prepared of what's happening these days. But I, I wonder if, um, our administration is, um, at least, um, entertaining that. Unfortunate happenstance, you know, if it happens, it does, but it's a reality. And a lot of people are trying to avoid that conversation. I appreciate all the efforts that we are trying to keep in return to, um, a safe environment. But do we have that, you know, in the back of our minds and are we, um, what are we going to do if that happens? I mean, this Delta is, is no joke. Um, and we are all concerned. And if you have not been affected by, you probably know somebody who has been. And, um, we, I mean, look at that spike. Look at September 1st. That is not a joke. That's real. And what's going to happen? We'd like Paul said, we don't know what's happening day to day. I'm like you, Paul. Every day I'm looking for new guidance and, and, I mean, our beds are full. I mean, I was one of those people who got sick and I didn't want to go and take a bed from a COVID patient at the hospital. I begged them, I don't want to go and, and take a bed. And they actually had to let me go because there's so many in the National Guards coming in. We can't ignore the fact that we're in a, we're in a crisis right now, a huge crises here and all over the country. And what happens if? So I'm just wondering, President Hamilton, if you all have a plan in place, you know? If then, you know, you know, what? How are we going to respond to that? Um, because we do have to keep a safe campus and keep our staff safe and.
Marge?
Thank you.
Yep. No, that, that's a great question, Holly, and we're struggling with that right now. We had it a little on the easy side last time because the governor just shut us all down. One blanket. I mean, it was that, if you recall, how did we do it last time? That was it. And then from then on, we jumped into emergency mode. This, this information has been creeping up and I, you know, the plan, what's our plan? Our plan is to talk to Lutke almost on a daily basis, uh, at Lane County Public Health. And then at some point make the decision. And, and I would think over the next week or two, before the board meeting, I'd be talking to you all and letting, but letting you know what Dr. Lutke is recommending. You know, you got to rely on something for us to interpret the data. I, I, I don't think we're capable. I, I think we could look at the data, but honestly, I, I like having Lane County Public Health be in our back pocket to advise us. So we will continue to talk to them. You know, nobody mentioned it, but what, in three more weeks, the university is all going to be in town. You know, it's going to be another surge that happened last time. So I don't see it because even if it does come down, I'm afraid it will double spike. So, so at the current, that's why Paul has been going in a downward direction with sections because it would be very easy, quite frankly, for him to just close the door and go back to where we were March 20. If you recall, when the governor made the call, March 20, we first, we all went home for two weeks just to get organized. But then we came back with what we call the central programming, which was nursing paramedics. It was the hands-on CTE. So we know how to do it. I mean, we, we could snap right back at that. It's just that we were trying to avoid it at all costs until we saw this was really happening. So I would say over the next couple of days, and tomorrow's going to be a big day, hearing from the, all the presidents and talking with the governor's office, what, what's going on in the governor's office? If we don't get any advice from them, that means we have to do it ourselves, which you all are highly ready to do. So I'm not, I'm not that worried about that.
Thank you. But with the CTE programs for automotive repair, I mean, the students can't take an engine home. So I'm just wondering, I'm concerned about those programs. I mean, they can't take the engine home. Anyway. So that's another concern of mine. Thank you.
I have Austin in the queue and then I'll go to Paul.
At risk of opening Pandora's box. The question I would have for the governor's staff, if President Hamilton, that, uh, for us to ask is, would they recommend taking away the philosophical exemption, uh, for community colleges? And follow more of the state guidelines as opposed to our university institutions? And, um, yeah, what's the ramifications of if, uh, we as a board decide to get rid of philosophical exemptions? I, I guess, uh, and yeah, data question is how many have already submitted a philosophical, um, um, exemption at this point? It's just a data question I have, but also I, I have heard it from a few board members and obviously staff that, uh, think that maybe we should not do a philosophical exemption. Maybe it's just medical and, um, over loose. And, um, why I'm open to the concept is because during these times, the fewer uncontrolled variables we have as an institution, the better. And that is a uncontrolled variable that we have within, um, the policy that we passed. So anyway, open Pandora's box. Sorry.
Paul?
So to Austin, I can address your, your question about philosophical from the student's side. I don't have the employee data at hand, but, uh, from the student's side, um, as of this morning, I think we had about 300, uh, requests for exemptions. I think about half of them were for personal philosophical exemptions. If we use, if we eliminate the, the philosophical, uh, and religious or the, uh, personal exemption, the forms that have been put out by OHA regarding, and mind you, we don't have to adopt those, but the forms that were put out by OHA for, um, uh, K-12 and healthcare, uh, the religious exemption is really loose. It just, um, someone has to say, I have, I have, I attest to a religious objection. There's really, it doesn't talk about doctrines or anything like that. I mean, I think that's something that we would struggle with, you know, how do we approve those or not approve those? But it's certainly something we, we would have to look at, uh, as far as that goes. The, my expectation of where we'll probably land in fall, given that we've just put the word out for some movement of courses that were, and, and parts of courses that were, um, scheduled in person to remote, I think will probably end up being about back where we were in the spring. We do have the same, um, we do have the same requirements with regard to mask wearing and social distancing, uh, for any in-person, uh, instruction and activity, uh, that we had, uh, last year. Those have continued. Um, so, so I would anticipate that, um, you know, that's probably where we'll land. Um, I'm, I'm nervous about a full return to remote. Although we do what we need to do, um, it would really impact some of our programs drastically. Like, like you mentioned, Holly, uh, it's hard to redo an engine, uh, uh, over Zoom. But, um, you know, we do what we, we'll do what we have to do to protect our students and community.
Thanks, Paul. You don't happen to know how many of those 300 exemptions are asking to take courses on campus, do you?
I, I don't have that data at hand. I, we can get that and we're working on getting that, but I don't know of the exemptions, uh, whose, um, might be in person or exclusive. I suspect most of them are in person, but I, I couldn't tell you right now.
Marge, I saw your hand. Did you want to add something?
Yeah, just to say that that's exactly the data Richard's working on trying to get for us. We, we got it in a mass amount, but literally over the past two days, we realized we have to break it down by who's going to be on campus and who is online because it's all blended. So that, that's not helpful to us at the moment. Richard's, um, telling me we've got about 193 personal exemptions of record, um, that we have been, that's been submitted.
Okay. Well, um, I know we don't make decisions in work sessions and, you know, this is a conversation and, you know, we're providing, you know, feedback and guidance to you, Dr. Hamilton, because you're gonna, you're gonna guide the ship here. But I, I, I did hear at least four people here say that they, they would be in support of doing away with the personal, um, philosophical exemption. And, um, I, I would be curious to, to hear an update from you tomorrow after you do have the opportunity to meet with the governor's staff, especially considering that, um, it's the, that the, it's not under the current state law. And we passed a resolution or we passed a board motion that asked to provide medical and non-medical waivers under the current state law. So. Mike, did you have something you wanted to, to say?
Hopefully my, um, microphone's working better. I moved my computer a little bit. I was just going to say, I got an email from Karen Smith, the, um, OCCA lawyer, talking about the governor, uh, announcement coming up between now and Friday. And in her email, she indicated she, she felt very positively that the governor was going to, in her mandate, was going to do away with the personal philosophical exemption. Now, I don't know if that will happen, but she seemed to think it was headed that direction in the governor's mandate.
Well, at least we agree with something. All right. Well, thank you, everybody. I don't see anybody else's hand up at this point. Um, Angela?
I'm sorry, now we're going to close up. Um, I just, I'm still not super clear. Will students be allowed on campus if they are not vaccinated? Is that a yes or no question at this point, or is that like something that's still being worked through? Did I, I thought I was.
I don't, it's a good question. Um, um, yes. Paul? You, you're still muted.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Yeah. I mean, students can file an exemption and be compliant, um, and, uh, be permitted on campus.
Okay. So, um, seeing lots, lots of faces on that one. Uh, so, um, good conversation. Again, um, I'm glad we're having this opportunity to discuss all of this. And I know that staff and, um, Marge are going to continue to move us forward on all of this and, um, that we'll, we'll have the opportunity to continue to make sure. I, I, I'm, I am not uncertain that we all have a commitment to the safety and wellbeing of this college community. Dr. Hamilton?
Yeah, I really just want to thank everybody because I, you know, I, me, Paul, we all needed to hear your views where you are. We learned a lot in three weeks. This wasn't like quick, cut and dry. This was truly the past three weeks flying that airplane, you know, while you're learning how to fly. So I thank you. Um, we're gonna do due diligence and get back to you as soon as possible. Chair Fragile, you also asked us about air quality. I just want to let you to know that that, that item is being discussed a lot. Right now, the buildings are following the certain code. And I wish, uh, Jennifer was here or Shane, do you know, can you articulate this a little better than me? But, but I heard today they are buying a fair amount of HEPA filters in addition. Shane, you'd be best to articulate this.
Sure. So, um, the, the industry standard is to have MERV 13 or better filters in all of the buildings. And we, um, Jennifer's commissioned a, a study for all of our spaces to determine whether, um, between a combination of, uh, manual air flushes where they're sort of turning over the, um, the air, uh, multiple times in the buildings and the use of that MERV 13 filter. If it's providing sufficient air exchanges to, to deal with, um, the virus. We're, we've had a lot of interest from employees, uh, to, to sort of continue to do the kind of thing before we, that we were doing before we started replacing MERV, the filters with MERV 13s, which was, hey, if we want one, can we get a HEPA filter in our space? And, um, our plan was to discontinue that after we replaced all those filters with MERV 13. But given some of the challenges of old buildings and, um, hearing the concerns that employees have about, uh, filtration and safety, Jennifer purchased 300, uh, HEPA filters, 200 for classrooms and 100 for, um, for office spaces to be able to, to meet that demand. So, um, we're again, a- adapting to these conditions as we go and, and listening to employees who, who have these concerns.
Thank you for that information. That, that sounds like a, a really valuable contribution to the safety that measures that are happening. Steve?
Just wanted to pick up, um, on some of the sentiments that have been, um, stated over the last bit, um, you know, the, the infographic that we saw about, you know, the Lane County surge. It really is shocking, you know, it's just so much worse locally than it has ever been in the 18 certain, you know, plus months that we've been dealing with this. But we are not, as a community and as an institution, not quite, well, we're not acting as if that's the case, right? We, we had far more urgency about this when the caseloads were a tenth of what they actually are right now. And something is wrong, right? When you think about that, like what, we should be, we should be primarily focused on the local situation. Um, and for whatever reasons, uh, they're not unclear to me, we're not. And I recognize that, you know, three, four weeks ago, things looked a lot different than they are now. So I'm, this isn't meant as blame, but it just as a, just as an observation of simple fact that we're not acting as if we are in the emergency that we clearly are locally. The hospitals are full. We're five, two, three times higher than we've ever been in terms of cases. So, you know, um, having listened to the conversation a little bit, uh, you know, I'm very clearly in favor of removing the philosophical exemptions and really narrowing that. And, um, and also pursuing this idea that if you are unvaccinated, you, for the time being, in a new age, you have that right. You also, we should be looking at the, um, possibility of limiting those folks, students in any case, to taking the online courses only. 60% of the courses, um, uh, you know, are offered that way, Paul tells us. I recognize that that, you know, imposes some limits on some students, but you know, that's the world we're in. So that, that's where I'm at personally. If you're not going to get vaccinated, we still want you to be part of our community to the extent that we can accommodate you in a safe way. And the only way that we can do that at this point is, um, to limit you to our online courses.
Austin?
Sorry to keep the conversation going here, but, uh, I think it's really important too because we also need to have verification that the individuals that have shown vacs, uh, vaccinations, that they are real and that we, uh, can, can, we can use that as actual real numbers to understand the percentages and the numbers of people that are vaccinated within our community. And I, 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 I think like uploading a, um, a very, uh, vaccination card is a, um, is a thing that can be done. I definitely understand the concerns about they could be fake, uh, and there's a discipline process for that. There is, um, uh, that there is, uh, students that might, uh, be technologically, uh, unable to do it, or it might be a barrier for them. But I think that that is a layer of safety that I think is really important. And, um, also from the, what I've been reading from staff is that there is this desire for safety and, and not necessarily, um, I, I hear more about their, their concern about safety of themselves and their coworkers and not necessarily the discipline of their coworkers. So, um, I, that's another area of like, um, I think someone mentioned a concern that, uh, if there was a fake, um, ID card or, um, vaccination card, that it could lead to discipline and all that stuff. And I think that from what I'm hearing from our staff is that it's not about discipline. It's not about grievance processes. It's about safety and safety, safety, safety. And, um, so anyway, that's, that's something I think we should definitely, definitely explore is to verify that when we say that we have 80% vaccination, that it's actually 80% vaccination. Cause it is, um, yeah. And anyway, that's, that's just a statement I have and, uh, something to, uh, for feedback.
Thanks, Austin. And, uh, is that hand going down? And is that hand going down? All right, it's 9:30, and this has been a very full meeting. So I am going to officially, I'm even forgetting the word I'm supposed to use. I'm gonna close this meeting, and thank you all very much. So we are, the LCC work session is officially convened. Thank you.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Have a good evening. Thank you, everybody.